Good evening. Welcome to the School Committee meeting of April 10th, 2022. This meeting is being recorded and broadcast on WHCA. We do have Fred. Fred is on the phone. Yes, Fred?
Yes.
Welcome. So any votes we take will be roll call votes. But as we start with every meeting, if we could please rise to the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. One nation, one nation, with liberty, liberty, justice, and for all.
Fred, we had you on delay.
Yep. Must be far away, Fred. Another time zone.
Oh, I had to, I had to stand up so I could pledge allegiance.
Yeah, we should have given you a second. Sorry. Well, welcome, everyone. We do have a very full agenda tonight, so we're going to do the best we can to keep it moving. The first item we do have is approval of meeting minutes. We have four sets of minutes. The first one would be for the, I would be looking for a motion for the minutes of February 16th, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, roll call vote. Steve?
Yes.
Shell?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Hillary?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Great, unanimous. Be looking for a motion to approve the meeting minutes of March 8th, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, we'll try and follow the same order. Steve?
Yes.
Shell?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Chris Howard, yes. Hillary?
Yes.
Chris Scriven?
Yes.
And Beth?
Yes.
And Fred?
And Fred?
Yes.
Sorry, Fred. Thank you. Chris Howard threw me off. I used to say my own name, let alone my last name. All right, I'd be looking for a motion to approve the School Committee minutes of March 9th, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, roll call vote. Steve?
Yes.
Shell?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Me, yes. Fred?
Yes.
Hillary?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
And Beth?
Yes.
Thank you. And last but not least, I'd be looking for a motion to approve the meeting minutes of March 15th, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, we'll go the same order. Steve?
Yes.
Shell?
Yes.
Don?
Can I just, oh, yes, yes.
David?
Yes.
Alvo, yes. Hillary?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Fred?
Yes.
All right. Love roll call votes. All right, public comments. So we'll open it up for public comment. If anyone is here for public comment, please come to the mic now. Going once, twice, sold. All right. Well, we will have some public comment from our Student Advisory Committee. I think we are missing a few folks that are participating, some extracurriculars, but we have Emma?
Emma McKeon.
Emma McKeon, so.
Sophomore.
Awesome.
So one of the things we wanted to ask about, I've talked to a lot of my peers, and we want to know some stuff about the schedule, if there's anything that it's come out, if it's been finalized, or do you know just anything really about it? Because we're all kind of out of the wim, and I know a lot of people are, a lot of people like it, but a lot of people don't.
So, so do you mind me deferring to your principal, illustrious principal in the back of the room? Dr. Jones, did you hear that question? Did you hear that question?
Yes, I did. Um, this, this.
Chris? Chris, come on up. You can't hide back there.
I was thinking about putting it down behind a chair, but that's what I'm looking at enough.
We have not finalized the schedule yet. We do know that there will be seven periods for the students to make sure that they get offered as many options as they have course-wise for electives and things. Right now, we're looking at a cascade rotation, which is a seven-day cycle. It's seven periods. You drop two, you drop one each day is what we're looking at, so you'll have six periods a day. Day one will be A, B, C, D, E, F. Day two will start with G, A, B, C, D, E, and then it'll just rotate through. So we don't have stagnant periods, so students don't see teachers at the same time. This has posed a couple issues. I don't like to say problems. They're issues that we're trying to work through and get creative around. One of them is restarting our internship program that we lost during COVID for the past year and a half, two years. We're trying to figure out how that works into the cascading schedule. We've got some ideas. We just have to be able to work through those ideas. A survey went out today to all the juniors to see who would be interested in an internship, what field they'd be interested in, in that internship, so maybe we can get our hands in and help them get some placements, based on how many there are. The piece about senior privileges, that there are students that are concerned about that I've heard from, I heard from a group of four students that wrote me a letter about senior privileges and the concern. As it is now, senior privileges, a student can leave campus or come in late based on if they have a seminar, that first block or that last block. By rotating the schedule the way we are and keeping those blocks from being static, seniors are no longer locked into that static block where they can leave. That, one of the things about that is there was, there would always be a mad rush of seniors to switch, trade, cajole, do whatever they could to get a seminar for one of those periods, so that they could leave either early or come in late. With the rotating schedule, that poses a problem, but we may have an answer to how we're going to adjust to that, where seniors, what will happen is, yes, seniors will have fewer opportunities to leave or come in late, but a greater number of seniors will have the opportunity to exercise senior privileges. So instead of being one of those seniors that was unable to get one of those seminar blocks and being stuck in the middle and not taking advantage of senior privs, now you'll get the chance to take advantage of senior privs as it rotates.
Do you know when you're going to let the kids know, when the final, when the final bell is going to ring, and you let the students know, because I think that's their concern?
Yeah, I would say the final bell is going to ring probably mid-May the latest. We're trying, we, we're getting close on some of those solutions that we're trying to, trying to get to. And we're, we're doing it moving forward. We're trying to get a schedule that's flexible enough that we can make some adjustments based on things like senior privileges, internships, without making a huge adjustment to the whole schedule, that we can just pick and choose and kind of slide things around. So that's what we're trying to come up with, why we're trying to come up with some flexible answers that will, in the future, allow us to continue moving things around. So next year may be a little sloppy as we figure it out, or a small kind of pilot piece as we go forward.
Thanks, Chris.
Answer your question.
You might not want to go too far.
My one other question is, I know there's been a lot of talk on starting later, starting at different times. I just wanted to know if you guys had any, if there are going to be anything changing to it?
So I can address that and say, for next year, not, no, time's going to be the same. But it will be something, I think, this committee, last year, we started something new, where this committee determined their goals and gave me some things to work on for the following year. I would ask this committee to do the same this June and work in subcommittees over the summer to see where those things, what priorities might be for the district, and that might be something we can look at. I lived 705 for, for nine years. It's tough. I get it. But I think it's something we might revisit coming forward. But for September of 2022, you're not going to see a change in the time.
Okay, thank you. That's all.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chris. Yeah, you, exit stage left for you.
All right. We'll move into the superintendents.
Yes, thanks. Nothing else? You're good? Thank you. Appreciate it. So, thanks, Chris. We'll go right into, so my evaluation's coming up. Last year, you, everything's in the, in your Google Drive, the rubric and the evaluation tool itself. The goal is to do that publicly at our June meeting. Over the next month, I'm going to be dropping things, evidence into the drive that you can use to support however you want to evaluate me. I'm also open to, if you have any questions about this year, having a one-on-one, come on up. As everyone knows publicly, it's a public evaluation, so you're not going to evaluate me privately, but you have to do this publicly, and I'm looking to do that in June. It worked well last year. I think I've given you some information this year, but I'm going to formalize it in folders, so you'll see under every goal and under every rubric, there will be pieces of evidence that we've done from last July on to support what I think, me doing my job. So if you have questions over the next, you know, month, please let me know. We can meet. Or give the finalized evaluation. Chris can set a timeline in May when he wants them in, so he can review, and then we can do it at the, at the June meeting.
So can we, can we just talk through that timeline a little bit now? Because I want to make sure we're all on the same page. So when you say the June meeting, you're looking to complete that?
June 8th.
June 8th. And we reorganize on May 23rd?
The people that are on this committee are bound to evaluate, even if they don't run again or are not elected, so they have to do the evaluation. New folks don't evaluate.
Okay. So just kind of thinking through the timeline so people can plan, when do you think you'll be done with your, when will you be done putting materials in?
Probably by the, by the first, second, first week of May, I'll be done.
First week of May?
Yeah. Before the next school committee meeting, all my, as much evidence as I can get in that I think will be valuable to you, will be in before the next school committee meeting.
Okay. So I'd just like to have timelines. So if we say by mid-May, you're, so May 15th, you're done, and then that would give the school committee roughly two weeks to complete them and get them in. So if we said by June 30th, June 1st, something like that, does that all, does that work for everyone?
Could you say the date again?
Sorry, May 30th or June 1st? June 1st? If we said everyone has to have them in by?
Wednesday, June 1st.
June 1st? Does that sound reasonable? Okay.
Chris, we get copies and we write in the copies. I haven't done this before.
Yeah, absolutely. Great question. So what will happen is, I think, so Jeff is going to put a whole bunch of stuff in the Google Drive by, by May 15th, and then Michelle actually has, there's a form that I think we've used through Desi that we'll all have. We can probably get that in the folder sooner rather than later, so you can look at it. Familiarize. It's in there already. Even better. You just complete that.
Download it, don't have a paper form?
And then you submit them, I would ask you to submit them to me, if you don't mind.
Okay.
You can send them to Michelle and, or both of us.
Paper form in the packet.
Yes, but the, yes, and paper forms here, but if you could get, so what I'd like to do is get the final copy by June 1st, because what I'll do is I'll take, and like I did last year, just take and do like averages of the rating scales, so that'll give me enough time to make sure I do that. And then what we did last year was, we didn't read any of the comments, we just opened it up, so if there's any, you can put the comments in there, they're public records, but we didn't take the time to read everyone's comments. So last year, what we did is, if we opened it up, if somebody wanted to share something great, and if they didn't, again, it's public record. So does that sound okay as a process? Sounds good? Okay.
I just have a question.
Yes.
We can electronically fill this out and send it to you.
That would be outstanding.
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah, electronically fill it out and send it to Chris, yes.
So then?
Or you can send it, I would say, send it, if, Michelle, how we've done in the past, both of us, or do you want it to go to you? How about both of us? Between the two of us, we'll make sure it happens.
So just on that, everybody just needs to make a copy of the document, because there's only one document, so if we all go in and try to edit it?
Good point. Don't, don't do it there.
So you have to make a copy of it. I'm going to give Chris a Google tutorial if anyone, if anyone needs one later, just make a note of that, because you'll go in and all your stuff will be gone, so.
Thank you.
Awesome.
So June 1st, thanks.
Yes.
Auditors' report. John, you want to bring up the auditors, please?
Thank you. So my name's Jennifer Cook, and I am the Signing Director on the Audit Engagement. I did pass around the presentation, so I'm just going to go through each of these pages. So first off, I just wanted to talk about the terms of the engagement and what we were engaged to do, which is express an opinion on the financial statements, that they're presented in accordance with GAAP, and provide reasonable assurance that they're free from misstatements. Express an opinion, in a relation opinion, on the schedule of expenditures of federal awards. Express an opinion on the compliance related to major, major programs. Provide a report on internal control over financial reporting and compliance with laws and regulations. Provide a report on internal control over compliance related to the major programs. And also provide a management letter based on any findings that may come up during the audit process. So just on page five, Executive Summary, just to, you have, you've received a full copy of the financial statements, which were issued on April 1st. We issued an unmodified opinion, and I did want to draw attention to, you will notice a restatement in the financials, and that's related to the implementation of GAAS-B84. And that's bringing your previously reported agency funds to, they all went to non-major governmental funds. The majority of those relate to the Student Activity Fund. Next, on page six, is just a highlight of the Statement of Net Position. A few things that I want to bring up is, the unrestricted deficit at the end of fiscal year 2021 was 118 million. As I've highlighted, below, the, the cause of this deficit relates to the OPEB liability and pension liability. OPEB specifically, that liability itself increased $30 million this year as a result of two factors: changes in assumptions related to calculation of claims, but also the discount rate. Because of the funding level currently in the OPEB trust, it requires that it's, it's reported at a blended rate, and because of the funding level, it drives the rate, rate down currently, which is driving your liability up. As you can see in the footnote of the financials, changing that discount rate, whether through funding or improved investment performance, you can see how, how quickly the liability can change from one way to another, and how significant these assumptions are on the projection of that liability. The net pension liability did decrease by $2 million this year, and that was a result of investment performance in the retirement system. Next page, on page seven, is governmental funds. That's where your general fund reported. There are currently three other major funds, which is the Circuit Breaker Fund, the Hanson Middle School HVAC Fund, which currently is showing a deficit, and that's a result of bands. So until those bands get paid off or converted to long-term debt, they, it will show a deficit. The other new fund is the COVID-19 Fund, and that deficit is a result of the CRF funding. So I believe as of today, you can correct me if I'm wrong, all the funds that have been requested through Whitman and Hanson have been received, but as of June 30th, 2021, there is a deficit showing. Next is Required Communications. You would have received a formal letter on this as well, but I just want to highlight a few items. Significant accounting policies, management is responsible for these, and these are outlined in Note 2. We had notes, we noted no significant or unusual transactions identified. Significant accounting estimates, as discussed, are pension and OPEB, as well as the estimated useful life of fixed assets. Next is Significant Disclosures. We've determined that disclosures are neutral, consistent, and clear. There was no difficulties accounted during the audit process. We did not have any past or corrected audit adjustments. Management did provide a management representation letter. We had no other consultations with other accountants, and no other significant issues that were encountered during the audit process. So as discussed earlier, another report is GAO, or sometimes referred to as the Yellow Book Report, and that is our Report on Internal Controls Over Financial Reporting and Compliance With Laws and Regulations. So we did not have any findings that rose to a material weakness or significant deficiency that would be required to be reported, and we did not have any non-compliance with laws and regulations. The next page relates to the OMB report, so this is your federal report. Currently, I mean, at the end of fiscal year 2021, there was $2.8 million in federal spending, which is, is a, a large increase from the prior year, specifically related to CRF funding that did come in, as well as the ESER funding through the Student Stabilization, Educational Fund, sorry. So the two major programs that we tested this year was the Special Education Cluster and the Education Stabilization Fund. We did not have any findings related to the Education Stabilization Fund. We did have one finding related to Special Education Cluster, which resulted in a qualified opinion and material weakness. I just want to clarify that the, the costs were allowable, however, they were outside of the, the period of the grant, but the costs were allowable. Management has appropriately responded and changed controls surrounding to ensure that does not happen going forward. Lastly, other matters we wanted to bring, we've discussed with management as well, the upcoming standard for GAAS-B87 for leases, and what's going to be required in the evaluation of those leases. So management is in the process of evaluating those, and that'll be implemented for fiscal year 2022. So I know I went through a lot of information fast, so I'll open it up for questions.
Any questions? Fred, you're good?
All right. Well, thank you so much.
Yeah, I'm fine.
Thank you.
I can feel the air, but.
Yeah, no, I know.
So you say, so I'm okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. John, Treasurer in OPEB, please.
Good evening. I'm going to be very brief. Just a few highlights of the past year. The district maintains very strong debt position. We've got five years left on this building. The last payment is January 1st, 2027, and then this will be completely, completely paid for, and you can have a bond burning party.
I can hear a word.
George, can you fix the mic, please? We got it, Fred, thanks. The mic's on. Just move it a little closer, please. Thanks. There we go.
You tell me.
A little closer.
Should I speak louder?
There you go. Closer.
Okay. The only, the only other project we have a bond, borrowing authorization for, actually, is the HVAC project for $1,65,000. That's out on a short, short-term bond right now, and we'll be paying that off over the next couple of years. And we also have the Whitman Middle School feasibility study. We have not borrowed any money on for that yet, and I'm not even sure if that's still in the works, but that's there when we need it. And then at the end of the year, our cash position was pretty much the same as it was the prior couple fiscal years, so that's good. And that is all I have.
Any questions from the committee?
Do we have, I'm sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
Do we have documents in our packet and relate to this?
No, these are just my notes. I, I did, these are just my notes.
It's not this?
No.
No. Just his notes.
Okay.
We need something, we'll, we'll get it to you.
Okay. No, just, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, David.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Kate Canny. I'm with Public Agency Retirement Services. We are a partner with the Plymouth County OPEB Trust Program, so we manage your OPEB account. And the document that you held up just a moment ago is our presentation that I think was included electronically in your packet, but I'm old school and I like to be able to have notes with, in front of me. Some of these faces are not familiar from when we started this program, so I'm going to give you a little bit of background on our program, just to catch everybody up. In 2015, the Plymouth County Commissioners approached my company, PARIS, to ask them to partner with them to establish an OPEB trust program. And this would be to help communities, regional school districts, and special school districts in the counties of Plymouth, Bristol, Barnstable, and Norfolk, address their OPEB liabilities. As your auditor spoke briefly, she gave you some information about your OPEB liability. So this program brought together a couple of groups. Plymouth County acts as the sponsor. PARIS, we act as the Plan, Trust Administrator, Plan Administrator and Consultant. So we do the day-to-day work. We assist John and David with the management of your OPEB trust. And US Bank serves as your trustee, a co-trustee, and a co-custodian. Very important roles. They are a co-fiduciary with David. Their goals are not only to invest the funds, to, but to make sure that these funds are being held and managed in the best interest of your beneficiaries. Your beneficiaries are your retirees. They're also your current employees and your future employees. So that's, that's an important role that they serve. We also have the Plymouth County OPEB Trust Investment Committee. That is a group that is duly elected from the membership of the OPEB trust program. The Plymouth County Treasurer, Thomas O'Brien, serves as the Chair of the Committee, and then there are four additional members who serve on the Committee. Aaron Orchet from Cape Cod Tech serves on the Committee, John Foster from the Town of Wareham, James Downey from Quincy College, and Artur Battistini, who's a selectman from Middleborough. Every agency is open to putting up a member of their agency for election onto the Committee if they so choose. We have, on the next page, it shows you the names of the Investment Committee committee. I'd like to actually point out a correction after this booklet was printed. We moved the next Investment Committee and General Membership Meeting to May 10th. I'm going to be sending John information about that, why you might be interested in attending that. That will be at 9 o'clock in the morning at Treasurer O'Brien's office. This will be an opportunity to meet with the Portfolio Manager, Dennis Mullins. He's going to come in, he's going to talk about the portfolio, how it's designed, how it's performing, and also, these are very interesting times as far as investment goes. The market's been very volatile. We're coming off of COVID into some very dramatic world events and inflation, so he will be taking that into account and kind of addressing those questions and aspects. And I'd encourage anybody interested to join us that day. PCOT has grown from 2015 to 31 members. You'll notice on page four, some of your colleagues, colleague districts have joined as well. There are 11 school districts participating in the PCOT program. On page five, this is a summary of Whitman-Hanson's participation in the program. On October 14th, 2015, the School Board voted to adopt the program and enter into the investing with PCOT. You selected the original trust, which is a growth portfolio. That's a 75%, 25% equity fixed income portfolio. It was the original portfolio and the only one available at the time. Currently, all of our 31 members are still in the original portfolio. The Plan Administrator is your Treasurer, Mr. Leary, and our Plan Contact, we have as Mr. Stamberg. An initial contribution was made in September of 2016 of $100,000. Additional contributions have been made totaling $75,000, so all-in contributions have been $175,000. You have not requested any disbursements. Disbursements are reimbursement for retiree healthcare. We manage that for you. At any time that you want to reimburse yourself for any healthcare-related costs for retirees, you may access funds in your account, but you haven't asked to do that. Expenses, that is the cost for you to participate in this program. So since your first contribution in September 2016, all in, the school district has paid $2,772 to participate. An initial contribution was made in September of 2016 of $100,000. Additional contributions have been made totaling $75,000. So all-in contributions have been $175,000. You have not requested any disbursements. Disbursements are reimbursement for retiree healthcare. We manage that for you. At any time that you want to reimburse yourself for any healthcare-related costs for retirees, you may access funds in your account. But you haven't asked to do that. Expenses, that is the cost for you to participate in this program. So since your first contribution in September 2016, all in, the school district has paid $2,772 to participate. That's not a month, not a year, that's the entire amount of funds you've paid. Your return of investment has been $105,513. So as of February 28, 2022, I apologize for not having the March 31 numbers, but those will not actually be available until the 18th of this month. So as of February 28, 2022, your account balance is $277,742. Page six actually shows you your contribution and if you were taking them, your disbursement history. So you'll see on two charts, it'll show you contributions that you've made. You made contributions in fiscal years 17, 18, and 19. You did not request any disbursements. So it just shows you a side-by-side the impact of investing and contributions on your account. I find these charts become a little more dynamic and interesting as your tenure in the program continues. Investment performance as of February 28, 22, your one-year return was 5.04%. Your three-year return has been 11.23%, so that's annualized return, so for the three years. And then for your five-year return, that's 10.48%. And then, an important thing is, we have run a pooled program. So we invest all the assets of all 31 members together. This allows us to drive down our fees and keep them low. When you joined our program, our investment assets under management fee was 51 basis points. And a basis point is 1% of 1%. Because we've been able to grow the fund through memberships increasing, contributions, and investment earnings, the fund actually, on February 28, was $41 million. We've been able to lower those fees down to 38 basis points. In the back of the report is an overview of the portfolio. I'm not the portfolio manager, so I really don't typically speak to that, but I am happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Questions from the committee?
Steve?
Would you give me that percentage split again that you said earlier?
Of your portfolio?
Yes.
You have a, your equity position is 75% and your fixed income position is 25%.
Okay, thank you.
Now, we do have three other portfolios that have been developed since. One is an aggressive growth, that's an 80% equity position. We have a balanced portfolio, which is a 60% equity position, and a conservative, which is a 40% equity position. You are available to change your portfolio at any time. There is not a cost associated with it. I ask one favor of you, that when you decide to make that decision or discussion, that that's an appropriate time for a meeting with the portfolio manager. You always want to make sure your portfolio switch is in keeping with both short-term rationale and long-term investment goals.
I think a lot of people get worried about the coming year.
Absolutely.
And you don't want to be foolish, but you want to be mindful.
So as you noticed, our return of investment for the past year was about 5.4%. COVID, we had an unbelievable bump. It was, our portfolio over that time period was returning about 25%. No, none of us predicted that. In March of 2020, April of 2020, we were looking at a down market. It recovered strong and then some. But we are looking with rates of inflation, I think, about a 4% return on our portfolio this year. Now, the portfolio itself is only designed to return you 6.6% over 30 years. We've built this portfolio to capture the highs and mitigate the lows as best we can. But if the school committee would be more comfortable in a 60-40 or 40-60, that's definitely something to consider. However, as your auditor will tell you, when you lower your equity position, you're lowering your return of investment, that will impact your discount rate, which could impact your unfunded liability. Something to think about, but these are all things to take into consideration.
Mr. Stamberg really stands as our go-to guy for everything financial. We found out so much stuff that's still racking our heads, so we will be mindful, and I appreciate your time.
I think Don had a question.
Yeah. So there's 31 government entities that are part of this plan, and you said the total value of all of those, is it 41 million?
Yes.
Okay. So I'm sure you can't disclose what each entity has for balances, but one could guess.
There, so I-
Thirty-one entities.
We have designed a program that helps every agency, because we, that's what we want to do, is provide agencies that have small assets and agencies that have large assets. You are not our smallest asset level by far, but we do have an agency that has just under $5 million. You are a regional school district. You have a challenge that special districts that have revenue sources and municipal values don't have, is that your ability to fund your OPEB trust comes from funding a line item in your budget. And that has to be approved by your member town. So that is your revenue source, and that's where you're allocating the funds. So that's a little bit of a challenge for school districts.
Thank you.
Other questions? Nope. Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for coming up. Moving on, transportation. John, if you want to step up, let me just give you a little bit of history. In February, I presented a presentation to the school committee on transportation, non-mandated transportation. From that meeting, members of our community said, hey, this doesn't make much sense when we, the costs, if we cut non-mandated transportation, were almost as equal to the cost of busing everyone. So Mr. Galvin, I'll give you, and Mr. Kane, really dug hard deep to try to come up with a theorem that would work for us and got us thinking. We presented that to DESI. We had two, I think, very insightful, spirited conversations with Jay Sullivan and Christine from DESI. I had a great conversation with the men from MARS, the Mass Association of Regional Schools, and they said, you know, have you ever looked at busing and mileage? And Chris and I had a conversation about, you know, when you take an Uber, you pay so much for, to go from point A to point B, and if it's point A to point B, which is 10 miles further, Uber charges you more. So we tasked John to look at that mileage piece, and he spent quite a bit of time of analyzing every student, where they live, and luckily, we have a good software system to allocate, to pinpoint every student. And he came up with a theory on mileage and transportation for mandated transportation and mileage. The goal of this group, and the goal of the citizens and the goal of the committee, is to try to maximize the amount of state money we could get in reimbursement. And I think we found a solution. We ran the solution by Jay Sullivan. Jay actually said, John, you could do it easier. Here's a different way. So John did it that way, and that methodology is accepted by the state. And retroactively, retroacted for fiscal '22, so when we do our reimbursements in July, we can use this method. And a FinCom member actually asked the question if we could look into fiscal '21 and make that amendment. Jay said yes. Now, I don't know what that means yet, so I don't want to disclose numbers. But Jay has John working on fiscal '21's actuals to see what we can get for reimbursement. So thank you, Ms. Otina, for throwing that suggestion out there. It doesn't hesitate to ask, and he said yes. So we're working on that. We have to get that in by the end of the month. But I can't share with the committee what that's going to be, and I don't want to speculate to, you know, to put a wrinkle in what we're talking about tonight. But thank you for asking the question. We asked, we were granted that, and we'll have more information coming from the May meeting. So John, crunch some numbers, and I think this is positive for the district and for both communities, in that we can actually get more mandated reimbursables, and we also cut the cost of non-mandated busing tremendously. So John, if you want to go with what you did, and I just want to, again, publicly thank Mr. Galvin, Mr. Lamontina, Mr. Evans, Ms. Otina, Mr. Kane, Mr. Heinemann, all the folks who kind of threw different ideas out there to have us look through a different lens. And again, the men from MARS for suggesting that, because that was something that has never come across. And digging in a little bit deeper, I asked Mr. Tuffy, I said, John, you were the regional superintendent in Silver Lake. Did you use per pupil, whatever? He goes, that's what's the going piece out in the Commonwealth, per pupil for reimbursables through the state. Mileage isn't used that much, and that might be something we might be sharing with our peers to say, have you looked at the mileage? It might be better for you, and you can get more state money instead of more local money. So John, take it away.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. So this is the sheet that I'm going to be reading off of, just looks like that. At the top of it, it says, Whitman Hansen Regional School District, FY23 Budget Comparison. The top part is the budget that was passed back on March 16, $58,492,314,12.
John, could you speak up just a little bit?
Sure. All right. Yep. I'll lean. So I'll just say that again. It's the document that is entitled Whitman Hansen Regional School District, FY23 Budget Comparisons. At the top of it is how the budget was voted back on March 16. The budget was $58,492. Again, I'm going to round numbers off. The town of Whitman's assessment was 17.797, and the components of that were the operating assessment, the non-mandated transportation, and the capital assessment on there. And then Hansen's assessment is also there of 13.9 with the breakdown of the operating.
Fred, is that, can you hear or not?
No.
Fred?
I hear it, I just don't see his document in the drive.
I don't know if it was in the drive. Did you email someone?
Did anyone get it?
Yeah, this one, I think, was in.
Was it in the drive, Michelle, or was it sent? I don't see it in the drive, but I know you, I thought you sent it.
Yesterday. It was in yesterday, it was in the packet.
It's in your paper packet.
Hold on one second.
We can't give-
Yeah, it's under Budget FY23. Financial Budget Documents, Budget FY23.
There you go.
It's right there.
Fred, you got that?
Thank you.
Budget FY23, there are two documents. One is Munich General Fund, former budget, and the other one is Assess Changes.
That one.
That's it.
Yeah, that Excel file, Fred, that's the one. FY23 Assess Changes.
Okay, so the Excel?
Yep.
And Fred, I just sent you a picture of it, too.
I did, too.
There you go.
Fred, you got it like five times now.
Nope, no problem. No problem. Go ahead. Sorry, John.
Okay, so the second part is with a FY23 mile method, I just want to, I'm trying to think of a name to call the mileage method. I'm calling it mile method, and with the state reimbursement with the new mile method at 90%. So the budget hasn't changed, it's $58,492. The town of Whitman's assessment would be-
John, can I stop you right there?
Sure.
This has not been voted, folks?
No, it has not.
I had John run these just so you can see the numbers, so that you can make an informed decision, because we do have to make a change to the assessment if, because I think it's, we're using a mileage method, so something's going to have to change. But it's up to the committee and how they want to do it. But I had John run these numbers for you.
Yeah, and maybe said another way. So the non-mandated lines certainly need to change.
Correct.
And then when it comes to the overall budget, which is the next discussion item.
Overall assessment, right.
The overall budget.
Yep.
Where we have a non-balanced budget.
Yep.
So, right, so now we're going to have more revenue coming in, and when we look at our total budget that was previously voted.
Correct.
We have more revenue coming in than expense, so we have to do something with that. So that may either translate to changing the assessments or something, but we shouldn't leave a budget where we knowingly have more revenue than expense coming in, because basically all we're doing is putting money in E and D. We're not, we don't have a balanced budget, so to speak, so.
So just wanted to put that out there.
Very important, yes, I agree, because this doesn't presume anything.
Right.
But it certainly gives the numbers.
I should have stated the assumption on the page exactly yet. You're right. I'm sorry about that. It assumes that the savings in transportation and non-mandated and in the operation part of it, operational assessment, gets passed on, and this will be the amount if it was, it'd be passed on completely to the towns. So the town of Whitman's assessment would be 17.3 million, again rounding the numbers off. The operating assessment would be 16,741. The non-mandated transportation cost would be 216 under the new method. Capital assessments would stay the same. For the town of Hansen, the assessment, total assessment would be 13,782,199. The operating assessment would be 13,245. The non-mandated transportation would be 55,234, and then the capital assessments would stay the same. It doesn't have any, that's not impacted at all. This is just transportation-related. So down the bottom, the difference between the two, the overall budget doesn't change at all. It stays the same at 58,492,314,12. The town of Whitman's assessment would go down a total of $420,603,92 if it was all passed through. And the town of Hansen's assessment would go down $163,120 if it was all passed through. And it's kind of a breakdown of where those numbers come from. So I can keep going, or?
No, no, I mean, yeah, I don't know if there's questions, but I think if we can kind of keep it in two pieces, just so we can kind of keep it on the rail, so to speak. So I think the first part of the conversation is around the methodology, what was done, the potential change to a mileage-based methodology, the fact that DESI approved. So if we can stay on that part, and then the next item on the agenda is that we can have the budget conversation. Okay, now, what do we do now? So any questions on the methodology, what we're doing on the methodology, why? Chris?
So just to be clear, we haven't changed the criteria for non-mandated or anything like that, right? It's all, everything's the same. Those services have not changed.
Not at all.
Thank you.
The only difference is the cost that was being calculated for a mandated and a non-mandated student, which was the same, is now very different.
Mm-hmm.
So like Jeff said, the person that lives very far away, there is now a very different cost than the person that lives close by.
And we can build a state for that. Yep. Thank you.
I had someone over here first, Steve, and then.
So last week, when we met as the Budget Subcommittee, and I know we didn't approve our minutes with that yet, David's been doing yeoman's work with our minutes.
Well, we did.
We did that one?
We did approve them, yeah, they're good.
You see, we went through those so fast. Okay, let's start. I know we were shown, first of all, two different numbers on the non-mandated, and what kind of threw me back was I didn't understand the first one. This gives me clarity in looking at it and saying, hey, that's a significant savings. But can John speak to how he got that, like, you know, he told us the mileage or whatever? Can we speak to that a little bit to explain that so folks know that it wasn't, it was done a certain way? Do you know the one?
Yeah, yeah, you can, yeah, go ahead. So, well, yeah, yeah, so hold on. So, yeah, no, never mind.
I don't mean to try, try, go on.
So, yeah, so I think, so John, I think maybe Steve's just looking to share a little bit more about the process in terms of the actual methodology itself, just a little bit. So, you know, to David's point, this was something that we did publicly through the Budget Subcommittee. We met a number of times throughout the course of March with folks participating with DESI, so that was certainly a step that was taken. But Steve, I mean, are you looking to share a little bit more about how, what that mileage basis is?
Yeah, I mean, you know, what did they come up with that made the difference?
Yeah.
So just to, I took every single student and found out their distance from the school that they go to, and then used that number to come up with a mileage total, and then took that mileage and split it out between mandated and non-mandated. I'm trying to, it was a lot of math in between, but that's what it was. So every single student's distance to the school was, that's what I figured out.
I want to make sure that everyone knows that, and it was steps, obviously, and-
And we ran it by DESI, and they were okay with that.
My question was kind of along the same lines. Not so much the process, but how do we, like, did DESI give you, this is the financial number per mile, like, right? Like, when you, I, I'm just, I'm thinking of people who travel for work and have to fill out mileage, right? So how do we get to that number? And I'm sorry if what you just said answers that.
That's a good question.
I sent them, there's a sheet that I, I don't know if you got it or not, you may not have gotten it, but I sent DESI the sheet of how I calculated it, the number of students and the number of miles. And that's when, like Mr. Simonic said, they came back with a much easier way to do it than what I sent them. And I adopted the method that they told me to do. So it's, it was, it's taking the total miles from school and then dividing it into mandated and non-mandated. So every student has a mileage. So for example, I'm one, I live one mile from school, you live two miles from school, the chair lives three miles from school, that's six miles, one plus two plus three.
Yep.
And then you total all that up, get a mileage, and then we break that mileage up between non-mandated and mandated. So our rules for non-mandated and mandated haven't changed.
Okay.
We just get the breakout of mileage between those two. And then you use those numbers to calculate the cost per student mile. I've been fighting, trying to come up with what to call it specifically, that that's what it would be.
Right, okay. Because I guess for me, it's, you know, if you're looking at a reduction of $400,000, give or take, right? I think that's important that we know, and you were getting to this point, that there was a process, it's not just thrown out there. Thank you.
So, yeah, it's, the budget hasn't changed on the district's end. It's just where there's more mandated busing under the mileage method that we can apply for and get reimbursement. So we're going to be getting more revenue from the state.
Gotcha. Awesome. Thank you.
David?
Yeah, I just kind of want to add a little bit to what Steve and John were saying. So basically, John Galvin and Sean Kane approached a Budget Subcommittee early in March with an idea on how to reassess how our busing methodology works, with the hope that it would become more eligible for state reimbursement over time, which would save the district and both towns money in the long run. We've been working through it. We met approximately, probably six or seven times in March. We had several different meetings. We met with DESI two or three times. We, Jeff had an interview or a meeting with Mars. And basically, long story short, is the methodology that Galvin and Sean Kane provided was not necessarily going to be eligible to be approved by DESI. However, after further conversation with DESI, we realized that we could do a mileage-based method of assessment. Therefore, that would be approved by DESI, and it wouldn't take away any services in terms of non-mandated or mandated busing, or eligible or non-eligible, depending on the terminology. So what we ended up doing is we had further meetings to talk about the assessment. We decided on a mileage-based assessment. And again, like John had already said, it was eligible for more state reimbursement, which would save us money in the long run. So we had further discussions on how that would be properly implemented. And then John reached out to DESI, John Stamberg reached out to DESI to make sure that would be approved. Obviously, as John just said, you know, he sent the paperwork over to see if that would be okay. DESI provided an even more helpful answer on how to calculate the numbers. From there, we met back up as a Budget Subcommittee, went over the methodology. You can say the numbers and the savings, I'm pretty sure it was approximately over $300,000 in savings for the town of Whitman, and it was a little bit lower for Hanson. So that, I mean, that's basically where we came at. John Galvin, Sean Kane had an idea. We discussed it. We decided to work through it. We found a methodology that was eligible through DESI that would make us more eligible for state reimbursement without taking away any services, and that's kind of how we got to where we're at now, if that makes any sense.
Absolutely. Well done.
I think the only two comments I would add briefly is, one, the reimbursement, so actually, first, probably one of the more meaningful things with this is, this is a permanent change. So this isn't a one-year change because now that we've changed the methodology, that eligible mandated reimbursable cost will be a permanent fixture of the budget or budget process going forward. So that's really good. The other item that we just have to pay attention to because it is a variable is the reimbursement rate, right? So even though we've added to the pool, which is wonderful, through that collaborative process of eligible reimbursements, we all have to understand that it's still always subject to appropriation and that amount changes. So right now, we're using 90%. Hopefully, we can get 90, hopefully we can get 100% like we should. But regardless, you know, the, the number is bigger, so even if it's a smaller percentage, it's still big, a big deal. But one of the things we'll all have to watch, because if we look at these numbers next year or five years from now, and all of a sudden, like, hey, what happened to those, that reimbursable rate? It could be a function of, hopefully, God willing, the reimbursement rate's going up a little, or it could be the reimbursement rate's going down a little.
More recent years.
Yeah, so we just have, it's just something to watch. But, but overall, I think that was essentially what we wanted to communicate. Any other questions?
I just have a, I don't know if it's a question or a comment, but the, do you have somewhere a document that you can share with us on the mileage, like the calculation piece?
Yes.
And if it's something, I don't want to make him have to, I don't want to have to make you make another document. I'm just interested to see how it played out.
Yeah, I have it right here.
Great.
I don't want to blizzard you with paper, though.
We'll make sure that it's.
He sees it in his dreams.
Right.
And, and that's the only thing that didn't change. John still works nine days a week.
Twenty-four, 24 hours a day.
So do you want to talk about the legal piece a little bit?
Yeah, so John, hang up there just for a minute. So in that process of talking about this, we had a discussion around how this is submitted and, you know, because in our regional agreement, what we have found is that their regional agreement is mucky and messy in certain spots. And there's different language that we, is in there that for the past 30 years, we necessarily haven't followed. So the Town of Whitman submitted a letter from their council. We submitted that letter to Andy Waugh. Chris and I had a couple of conversations with Andy. I submitted, Chris dug some digging in into town reports from the 90s. I then submitted to Andy every assessment from 2001 to 2022. And what we found in those assessments is that it's been consistent, we've, we send the towns an operating assessment, a non-mandated busing assessment and a capital assessment. Sometimes it has changed. We used to send Whitman a crossing guards assessment as well, whatever. Based on what our council has said, that process is the process we should continue to use, but we really need to start looking at the regional agreement so that we can get it clear from both communities what this process will mean. In that, also, that, that conversation with Andy, based on those assessments, we've seen an 80/20 split or a per pupil, really, of the non-mandated piece. It wasn't broken into a 60/40 or the general operating assessment that we have followed in the regional agreement. It has really been by the pupil and it was really almost a direct 80/20 split for the past 30 years. I can document from 2001 on, Chris saw the original in 92 where it was split up like that.
Yeah, for Hanson.
For Hanson. So, so that would be my recommendation to the committee as we move forward, follow the, the process that we have had. It's a little bit different than what Whitman Council has, has alluded to, but we went with our council too and that's what I'm submitting. Both attorney letters are, are in your packets and I know you both reviewed those, but the comment from Andy is, you know, follow your process, it has been past practice and you really need to look at the regional agreement.
Yeah, and so just the only part I would add to that, I think there was a, you all have a copy of the letter from Andy, but there was a piece in there where he did talk about the Boards of Selectmen having that overall authority of the town meeting warrant in articles. So I think, and, and Andy was very clear, you know, the, the agreement, like, if you read that transportation language, it's, it's messy. There's one line that says one thing, the next line jumps to something else and the third line, we're not even sure where that came from, whether or not it can be done. But he was very clear, you know, this is something that we should probably clean up, but based on the way we've been doing it, that's fine. And also, ultimately, you know, the way the towns decide to handle this is, is within their purview. So for us to say, here's how we've broken it out and to provide that to the towns, the way we took that previous vote with each of those lines being voted, we had the operating assessment, the line for non-mandated busing and the line for capital, he said that that's fine. Again, if the towns choose to do that differently within the scope of how the Board of Selectmen choose to put that within the warrant article, that's, that is up to the towns. The bottom line is, I think, we have an agreement that is, that is not as clear as any of us would like. So that is something that Jeff and I talked, I think, just to that point, we both agreed that's something we'd like to put on the school committee agenda right after the May elections. There's no sense in trying to start a regional agreement now when we have elections that are ongoing and then have a conversation about how do we clean that up and how do we move that forward. So I think those were the two big points on the legal update. Questions or comments? Yes, Chris?
So I know we've talked recently about the school committee having the authority to present their budget to the towns, right? And how it appears on the warrant? Is this conflicting with?
Yeah, yeah, so I think, yeah, and I think, yes. So I think the way that Andy described it to us was, it said, there's, you know, I'm not an attorney, we can bring him back if we want to do that sometime, but the, I think the general concept was the spirit of the law, and it, not even spirit, I think it's explicitly stated, is that for a regional school district, essentially, the towns can, can, can agree to fund it or not, right? And so that's where it gets a little murky when you start breaking out some of these pieces because of our regional agreement and because of the way we handled this.
Yep.
It's, it gets really messy really fast.
So, but just to go back to when Jay Sullivan was making those comments about.
He was, yes, he was, but he didn't have our regional agreement in front of him.
Okay.
With the language in there pertaining to some of this. And he didn't have, this is how we've done it for the last X years. So, and he also said he wasn't an attorney.
Sure.
So that's the hard part. It's, I, I don't think anyone has a clear, the best way to make this clear would be to take the regional agreement and spell out in very clear language exactly what we want to all happen. That would be the way to do it.
Sure, yep.
But, yes.
If we know that presenting it the way we have in the past with a separate line for non-mandating, as Jay and Christine said, may present an inequity because one town can vote down one line and another town can approve it, the non-mandated piece, why wouldn't we as a committee make a decision to not follow past practice and to put one budget line item to both towns? And then they vote one line, yes or no?
The committee can do whatever it wants, we're just sharing the opinion of council.
Right.
And it's our council, not, as Jay said, not an attorney.
I agree. But I believe Jay was saying Mass General Law says a regional school district provides one budget number to a town. They can say yes or no. And, and we decide what goes in that line item, for that one line item of the budget. I, yeah.
I think, you know, I, I understand what Don's saying, I think that, and I agree with that, but I'm wondering if just this year, because of the change, that to see the difference between years is important to the two, the people of the towns, to see that we're making a difference and that we're working on it, but then next year to put it all in one. And I just, you know, it's just a matter of seeing it, you know, the townspeople seeing, look, this is what we did, look at the money we just saved you, you know, and as a separate line, that you have that. But then I agree with Don that it should be one, one package in there. But for this year, I'd really like to leave it as the two lines. That's just my opinion.
Chris?
Yeah, I just want to follow up. Was Andy privy to our discussions with Jay Sullivan?
Yeah, we gave him video.
Okay. So he still made his, his opinion based on, okay. Thank you.
Other questions for the committee and otherwise, I see people lined up, so.
I just have a, to Don's point, too, I don't disagree. My only worry is because we often have such a difficult time with the budget, putting these numbers in and it being rejected, and then we as the committee have to, like, buses or this, right? And I think to Beth's point, showing, I think, and we talked about this in Policy Subcommittee, educating the people of the community and saying, this is how we've done it, but moving forward, this isn't how we're going to do it. This year, we've saved you X amount of dollars, then we can do what, I think, putting it all in one. But I think to do it right now, I, I concur with Dawn, excuse me, with Beth, that I, I don't know that it's the best idea to do for right now, just because of the, because of what we've done to make it different.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Fred.
And sure you, perhaps, Mrs. Stanbrook, but we are giving one budget item and one assessment to the towns, the difference is how we break it out. So we're breaking it out after the operating assessment, but we're still giving one number and we're allowing the towns to see what that difference is. I mean, I would be in favor of removing the difference, so to speak, recertifying our budget, you know, to reflect those savings, putting those savings into those predictable line items.
So hang on, Fred, because the next item is going to be budget. So right now, we're just talking about, I think, the legality and then, and then you can do what you want to do. But hang on, so, did you have?
No, I'm fine.
Okay. Then Don.
Yeah, through you, Chair.
Yeah.
Maybe to Fred, but correct me if I'm wrong, if we have an operating assessment to the towns and we have a non-mandating, non-mandated busing line to the towns, if one of those is rejected, then our entire budget's rejected. Is that correct? I want to clarify.
One of those is rejected, our entire.
Like.
I guess we'd have to post that up to the council.
Yeah, I think that's an important question to find out because that's what it seems like we are voting for, is presented to us tonight.
Yeah, I mean, I think the other point to point out, and because I don't know if you understand that, and I'm not sure this is where you're going, but if you're suggesting that all of the school costs get put into the operating assessment line, then that does change the financial implication as to how it's been handled for the last many years, right? Because the operating assessment is going to be more of that 60/40 and really the way, again, whether I agree with it or not, the way it's been handled, that non-mandated transportation line has been basically a per-town cost. It's been handled like a special operating cost. So I think that's the danger with saying, hey, it's all going to go in a line, it's no longer a special operating cost, it's no longer a cost per town, it's now just a district-wide cost, which, again, in reviewing the documents, that's the issue.
Yeah, which I think we clearly support the busing. I think to your point, Hillary, you know, we're not at all saying we're going to take away busing or anything at this point, it's just a matter of where do we place that in line? Yeah.
Hillary, and then I really want to get.
Sorry, but to your, but to your point, Chris, I think that, you know, coming from Hanson, I think that what Chris kind of said is going to ruffle a lot of feathers where right now, we're doing a per pupil and it is essentially an 80/20. And if we put it on a line item at 60/40, and I don't know how that would go over in Hanson, considering still kind of, you know, we have to figure out the statutory method, but you know what I'm saying? And I, I don't know that I want to put people in that position where, you know, we've, we all were there when the methodology changed for, you know, to go to statutory and I just don't know that that would be the best thing to do for the students. I agree, I think buses are important, but you're going to have people who are going to say, wait a minute, we were doing 80/20, now we're doing 60/40, what is this? And I, I just, I don't, I would like to maybe try to avoid that if we can.
Mm-hmm. I agree with you.
Mr. Chair?
David and then Fred.
I'm just thinking real quick in my head and maybe a good process that we could go about as a committee is when the Regional Agreement Amendment Committee meets again. The main discussion, I assume, would be relating to the busing methodology. So maybe that's the point where that committee goes and hashes it out and creates a updated agreement that would be in line with how we envision our busing practices to be in the long-term future, if that makes any sense. So for now, I, I personally don't think this is the most ideal way and I, I know I've been a critic of the regional agreement in the past just by how it's been implemented. But, but I personally believe that maybe it might be in our best interest to go about non-mandated busing the way we are right now, but I am open for suggestions, but maybe it's better off for us to meet as a Regional Agreement Amendment Committee and then add those changes, get them approved and then go through the busing process in line with what the updated agreement would say. So maybe that might be a good way of going about it. Not positive, but it's an idea.
Thank you. So I see some folks waiting. Feel free. Just give us your name and address. Oh, sorry, Fred, I forgot about you. Fred first, sorry. Sorry, Fred.
I just wanted to, you know, piggyback on Ms. Niffen's statement. By changing anything right now, we're, we're creating an inequitable situation. The way it's done right now is equitable for both towns. It distributes the cost where they should be distributed and to whom, I should say, they should be distributed. And that's fair. And I think both towns would feel that that's fair. You know, as far as the, we do need to do, redo our regional agreement. We have a beautiful blueprint already in place and, you know, some great ways to start, so to speak. And I'm sure the men from Mars would be fluent of a finalized that opinion and change since we had done it two years back.
So David, quickly.
Just, just real quick, so superintendent, just for clarification, you said over the last 30 years, the way it's been done is about approximately an 80/20 split?
I can document from 2001 on.
Okay, so I mean, with that being said, I, my personal opinion is I think that is more of an inequity than it is an equity that benefits both towns, which is why, again, my suggestion would be that we need to work on this and update our regional agreement. That way, we can start implementing bus changes or our busing process that reflects the new updated regional agreement. Because to Chris's point, to Jeff's point, not only is it statutory that was done incorrectly a couple of years back, but now it's also the busing methodology. So the, the whole entire constant theme with the regional agreement is that it's been outdated and the way we do things isn't necessarily reflecting what the regional agreement says. So therefore, we should amend it and update it. And then with the new changes, we go from there and, and have a continuous transparent process that we've worked on together to move forward and then hopefully through that clarification and the money being saved to the Town of Hanson and Whitman and the services being implemented at the school district, that hopefully that would be to our constituencies' benefit and they would see the work we put in and from there, we can move forward. But that's how I look at it.
And everyone's going to have, everyone's going to have different opinions. Fred, so Fred, yeah, I really don't want to go back and forth, but, yes.
Very brief, very brief, Mrs. Drew Udo and Mrs. Stanbrook, the charges that we see appear for non-mandated transportation in this charge that are highlighted, the new, new charges, those are reflective of the cost, I just want to verify that.
Yes.
Yes. John says yes.
Okay, so that is perfectly equitable. Thank you.
Okay. Yes. Sean, go ahead.
Sean Kane, 31 Forest Street. I think as, as we come to a solution with the transportation dilemma, it's a good thing, you know, and I think we need to slow down and, and realize when something is good and when we benefit from it, you know? We did some, some work and a lot of people played a role and John Stanbrook did a ton of work and we came out and, and we had a win, you know? So I think it is good that we document that and think about, especially next year, starting early with some budget work, stuff like this, I know it's, it's not always easy and it does take a lot of work and it doesn't always pan out the way this did, but if you look at the circuit breaker and, and the, the transportation issue and how much money was kind of saved, it's one of the ways in which we're going to get the budget to work this year. You know, we are in a unique situation where enrollment's declining and we're in a tough situation with the hold homeless and it's very difficult to add services, although we need to add services. So given that frame, finding ways to become more efficient is extremely important. So to be direct about the start of this budget cycle, at the start of this budget cycle, you didn't want to look at the budget, if you remember. It wasn't a priority until later in the, later in, probably three or four months into the, if you were, you were talking about priorities in June, you didn't want to talk about budget until, say, September. And I think, do that again, you know, certainly focus on priorities again, that was a, a very helpful process, but keep the budget as a priority, you know, as a, as a, the five-year plan, keep looking at the five-year plan, keep trying to surface ways to become more efficient and I think it can only be helpful. It's, it's a lot of work, but that's, we got to win today, I think, and it's one way in which we're going to potentially fund the budget. If we can do it again next year, I think it's going to be helpful.
Thanks. Thank you, Sean. Ms. Otina?
Kathleen Otina, Whitman Finance Committee. First, I want to thank everyone who was involved with this. I'd also like to thank the superintendent for hanging in there because you inherited a flawed regional agreement. By the time you retire, Jeff, I think it will be perfect.
Hope so.
The bad news, Jeff, is that it's going to take 10 years for that to happen, you're stuck.[1728.21] you're stuck. But I do want to quote from the regional agreement, Section 5 Transportation. It says, this is right from the agreement, "School transportation shall be provided by the regional school district, and the costs thereof shall be apportioned to the member towns as an operating cost." Sentence number two, "The regional school committee shall determine on an annual basis whether or not non-mandated, whether or not non-mandated busing will be paid for by the regional school district." And that's a key point. You can decide whether you want to pay it, or you can decide that you don't want to pay it. If you decide you want to pay it, you pay it out of your operating expenses, your operating budget. If you decide not to, sentence number three, "If the regional committee decides not to provide non-mandated busing, an article will be presented to the selectmen's office of each town for the approval by the voters." The problem I see with that, having an explicit non-mandated busing line item, is that the voters of the town can vote it down. And then how do you get those children who are not eligible for busing bused to the town? And that's, and I've sat in on, or I looked at the Zoom meetings where Christine Lynch said, you've got a problem here if one town says yes and the other town says no, you have an inequity, because you can't bust kids from one town and not bust the kids from the other. So I think the danger in splitting out the non-mandated busing costs lies in the fact that there will be possibly a town, maybe both towns, say no. Put it into your budget. Yes, it folds it back into the 60-40 method, which benefits one town over the other. I've done, I've run the numbers, so I know what they are, and I'm not going to share anything that you don't already have. But you have it in your regional agreement already that you could vote to pay for non-mandated busing, period, and not go into, you know, sentence number three, send an article to the town. If you send an article to each town, one or both towns can say no. So I urge you to vote to fund non-mandated busing in your operating cost.
Randy Lamatina, Selectman, Town of Whitman, liaison to the school district. First off, I think everyone that's been involved in this process was involved in the process for one reason. A large benefit to being a regional district is state reimbursement for transportation. We have accomplished that through a lot of butting heads, through numerous meetings. Like Sean said, it's a win. I would urge you not to move to fund transportation. Because what was very specific in Mr. Sullivan and Ms. Lynch's meetings is if you do that, you have to follow the regional agreement. And the regional agreement will then split this operating cost 60-40. It's inequitable. I think we have a way right now, whether it be by article or the standard way, like Mr. Waugh says, the towns can move forward how they, it's their decision at that point. We have an opinion, we have a solution. We are going to stand up and speak on the 487 line, and say later, you will see an article that Mr. Heineman has drafted for the 216. It's the cleanest way to do it, it is the most equitable way to do it. Whether or not you open it back up, that's your decision, but as far as busing goes, I think you, and I agree with Mr. Forth, this does need to get ironed out. I think there is a way it can get ironed out in a new regional agreement where mileage can be factored in, and this equity can be carried forward in a cleaner manner. To wrap this all in, it was very clear by Ms. Lynch and Jay Sullivan, you must follow the regional agreement, and that really does stick it to the town of Hanson.
Thank you. Anyone else? Jim?
Good evening. Jim Hickey, Perry Ave, Hanson. I'll cut right to the chase. I know there is an elephant in the room that people may or may not want to talk about it in public. I agree with Randy. There's been some problems in the regional agreement for a while, and quite honestly, this has turned out to be a bad marriage for Hanson right now. And I could tell you that people in Hanson think that the school committee has somehow lost their way and forgot why they were voted into the seats that you all hold now. I think it can be fixed. I think we need to sit down at the table and start from the beginning. You know that we went through the Deregionalization Feasibility Committee, and now TMS is actually working on the financials of what it would cost for Hanson to leave the district. You also know that I've spoke with Paula Hatch, chairwoman of Silver Lake Regional High School. I've done this on my own. Last night, if you watched the board of selectmen's meeting, I got the blessing from the board to continue talks. That's all they are. But as far as Hanson goes, we need to find or fix the system we have now. So, you know, I know we're kind of getting off on what this original discussion was meant to talk about, but David had brought it up a couple of times, and so did Mr. Simonac with the regional agreement. We need to fix it, and we need to fix it now. I mean, that's it. Thanks.
Thank you. Hold on, I want to do, so what I'm going to, Beth, what I'd like to do is hear from the public, and then we're going to bring it back to the conference. That's all right.
If I remember what I was going to say.
Cut it down real quick. I know it's been a while. Yes, let's come in.
Yeah, so I just want, Laura Kemet, 83 Bay State Circle, Hanson. Just wanted to mention, I'm a bit gobsmacked that I'm hearing for the first time about legal opinions that have been received about a busing issue that our town has not seen. We have not been asked for an opinion. I have not seen the Whitman opinion. I have not seen the school committee's council opinion. That feels extremely wrong to me, particularly, and now there's a discussion about breaking this out as a separate warrant article. We've closed our warrant. We voted last night to place articles, and we have a deadline of Friday. So unless we have some kind of an emergency meeting, which we can certainly do, but unless we have some kind of a last-minute emergency meeting, we've got no way of effectuating this. So it feels very much as though the line of communication is broken. And it's not just broken, you know, I echo some of what Mr. Hickey, who just spoke before me, said, which is, you know, I appreciate that there are things that one can do, but timing is everything. And we are still spinning from the results of the change in the assessment method. We will get over it, one way or another, and we're moving in that direction. But to continue to have what feels like a very unilateral conversation about the budget is not going to help heal the wounds that we've still got from the change in the methodology. So I'm really hoping that you guys take this into consideration moving forward. I do very strongly agree with everybody that spoke about the need to sit down and look at the regional agreement. When you've got a regional agreement that any four or five attorneys could look at and not in any way, shape, or form agree with what the objective of the agreement is, we've got a problem. And we've got a problem because we know that it doesn't accurately reflect the way things are being run or should be run, and we can do better. And we really, honestly, if we're going to have a relationship going forward, you know, and I'm hopeful that we will, I really, like, to the core of my being, I'm hopeful that this relationship will continue, then I think we need to sit down and really have the tough conversations and come up with an agreement that we all feel accurately represents what each town should be bringing to the table, and then we just move forward. So thanks for listening.
Thank you, thank you. The one point I will just, for the record, I think it's important to understand, in terms of conversations and legal opinions, folks from Whitman have attended, I think, four, four or so budget subcommittee meetings where busing has been discussed. So those are the conversations that occurred. Those are all public meetings. Anyone is welcome to attend. That's where the communication has occurred. We, after the last school committee meeting, received a communication from Whitman's attorney, which we then decided to engage our attorney, and that letter is in the packets tonight. So that all happened within the last week. And so that's kind of what we've done, and why we've done it, and how we've done it. So I think the only other thing that's important to understand is, in that letter from Attorney Waugh, he's very clear that, you know, the towns have the ability to do with what they want to. So if Whitman is so inclined through their selectmen to set up their warrant and town meeting in a certain way, it doesn't mean Hanson has to do it, right? So I think there's clear legal clarity that the boards of selectmen have that authority in terms of how they place and what they do. Just because one town does it one way doesn't mean the other town has to. And I think we're all in agreement that we need to get back to the regional agreement and get something that's clear, but frankly, I'm tired of spending a lot of time over the last several years trying to figure out what the bloody thing says. And I think we're all tired of doing that, and it's very difficult when it's not clear. And we have to guess at, well, it says this, and it meant this. The section that Ms. Otina referenced is, you know, one of my new favorite sections. In one sentence, it talks about the school transportation shall be provided, but then in the next section, it talks about paid. It completely, the one is not, you know, I don't, you know, I don't possess the strongest understanding of the English language, but I do know when something is, one sentence says one thing, and the other sentence is, and these are the problems that we're now trying to guess. Well, what did they mean in 1992 when they signed this? And we're trying to cobble this together. So I think everyone's trying to do the best job they can, but I think we all agree that words are important, and the cleaner we can make this, the better off we'll be. So hopefully, that's where we can move to. Sorry, Beth, you've been waiting so patiently.
Or impatiently, no. So in the past, you know, when I've been at the town meetings and we vote, there's the school operating budget, and then there's the non-mandating.
And then capital. And then capital. I think that's usually true.
Yeah, and it's different numbers. I mean, and you vote each one. I have yet to see non-mandated not voted for, never, not even questioned. It's not even been questioned at all the town meetings that I've been, and I've been going for years. I've been resident of Whitman for 47 years, so I don't have any, I really don't worry about it not passing. I really don't. And I don't think Hanson would have a problem either, because they don't have great sidewalks and they.
Kids aren't walking down.
Yeah, I mean, you know, kids living in Mon Poncent and stuff, you're not going to vote. Yeah, so I really don't see that. So, you know, are we looking to, I guess what I'm looking for clarification is, are we looking to leave it as that this year?
So we have to decide, right? So what we have, what we have voted as a school committee, what we have is binding communication to the town, is a communication that basically says to both towns, we voted three things. There was a letter certified, it was sent, and I'm paraphrasing, but here's the operating assessment, here is the non-mandated busing line, and here is the capital.
Now we're going to change it.
So.
It's the top of this paper.
It's, right, it's the top of that paper. So we now have an opportunity to do whatever the will of the committee is. We can simply, we can revote all three of those lines, we can revote the non-mandated lines, we can, we can, we can do what we want to do as a committee, or we can completely rescind everything and completely start over, which, if that's the will of the committee, so be it. But that's where we're at. So there is, that's what we've set, that's where we're at, and now it's a question of what do we want to change? We do need to make some changes. I mean, for the record, right, to your point, the non-mandated busing line that John gave for Whitman, the one that we sent was 487-839.
Now we change.
The new one would be 216-059 and 44 cents. The Hanson non-mandated line was 121-475. The new line would be 55-234. So taking that into context, again, I can't prognosticate the future, but I don't, I agree as an, just as an independent opinion, you can all just take it as one of yours. I find it hard to believe that this is the year that we're not going to pass non-mandated busing when we just cut the cost in half. But.
All right, going with that, and we're talking about that, can I make a motion then at this point in time? And then you can have discussion afterwards, but can I make a motion that we go with the new numbers and submit the new assessments to both towns?
So are you for operating assessment or non-mandated busing?
For the way that it is set up here, for the operating, then the new non-mandated, and the capital assessment doesn't change.
So.
We can't do both, we have to, why do we have to reach line?
So here's, here was, here's what I'd ask, because there's very specific language that was attached to each of these assessments per MGL.
Okay.
So I have the language. If you'd like.
Oh, okay, I see which one.
Perhaps we can, I would just suggest maybe we start with the non-mandated busing lines, and you can do them one at a time, and then you can move to the operating. But here's a language that I was given that we need to read. The bottom two.
This is what we did the last time.
It's, but the only difference is now it's an amend, and this does require a two-thirds vote, because everything else was two-thirds up to this point.
So, so do you want me to do the non-mandated first?
So go ahead.
Do you want me to do the non-mandated?
I think it would be cleaner, you can do whatever you want, I just think it would be cleaner to take the non-mandated first.
Okay, so I make a motion to amend the FY '23 costs for non-mandated busing for the town of Hanson at $55,234.19.
Point of order, Chair.
Yeah.
Just want to be clear, we don't step in anything. The motion was made and seconded, we're now we're doing something different.
Well, so, I'm going to say, I'm going to say the motion was not valid because it didn't follow the law. Unless anyone wants to feel otherwise, but I, yeah, I mean, I think the motion just, this is one of those where we can't just be like what he said or she said, but we have to read very specifically. Okay, so now we have a motion.
For the Hanson.
For Hanson. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, do we have discussion? Yes, Chris?
I think my comments will capture both things, you know. I've spoken at length and very adamantly about partnerships. This is being a good partner. This is what being a good partner is, working together with members of the community, binding savings, passing them along. I don't see the benefit to anyone to do anything else at this point, so.
Any other comments? Steve?
I don't mind. You know, I had a big, long speech I wanted to do, and it would have probably put us all to sleep, but it's just been nerve-wracking of everything that goes on, and it keeps you from participating and being what people are expecting out of you. And I say that because we're looking at these two numbers, but we are hearing from people who are our friends, our relatives, our fellow citizens, that they're saying we're not going with the law, we want to go with the 30-year kind of following that we've done. I mean, I'm happy to vote these because they're savings everywhere, but just like when we did the 50-50 split with the assessment, I think we need to use this kind of as a griche here. But I don't want to get to the end of the driveway and find the Whitman police with a tow truck ready to take the blue Jeep and me to somewhere else. You know, I mean, that's how, that's how it can be. And when you also include legal opinions, we're just not, we're not being neighbors anymore. We've got, we've got, I know both towns have new town administrators. One of them, I told, you're part of the fabric of Whitman. You're now one of the residents. You might not live here, but you're one of us. And that's what we need to keep collectively thinking. I don't want to break the law, and I want to be fair, and I want to be equitable. I want to pay what my responsibility is as a homeowner and a property owner. I mean, Mr. Scribbling can say, Steve, I'm going to have you pay for part of mine.
Would you?
But, but what it gets down to is like, and I know, this is a blue state. I'm not making this political. You all know where I sit. I tell you every single time. It's way up in the balcony at the Bruins games. But anyways, it is that the more of a push that we have others paying for us, when that 60-40 thing just worked. I'm sorry, it just worked. And I'm not saying, you know, now we've got to ship back to that, but just think of the times.
No, hang on, Fred.
The pandemic probably has scared us all quite a bit. But I didn't participate in Whitman's strategic plan. I didn't talk to any of the folks. You know why? Because I just, there were too many things that we had to think about. We're not even talking education tonight.
Yeah, bring it back to this, Steve. Yeah, I need you to.
I got you, I got you, I am. I'm right there. You know, we haven't talked about education tonight, right? Is that part of, is that true? I know you're not going to answer me.
Of course. This is, this is my frustration, where we spend so much time talking about agreements and these things, but that's the matter in front of us.
I want to move this. We do have.
Yeah, so I think the only thing, I guess, I just want to respond, because I think this is really important, because it's in Andy's letter explicitly, there is no law pertaining to non-mandated transportation costs and how that's assessed. So the statutory whole thing was very clear. There is language. We literally took the statutory language and we put it in the agreement. This is not, and so I'm not going to play attorney, but I, the letter that you have from council, he says this has nothing to do with breaking law. He is explicitly clear that there is no law pertaining to this, and it is his opinion to continue doing what we've been doing. That's what our attorney said. So I know we can all play attorney, but he is the attorney, and that's what he said. So I think that's just.
You got your words from Gessi.
Who also said they weren't attorneys.
Okay.
Okay.
But go ahead. Dawn.
So I want to clarify the vote also. It's not only for the change in the amount, as Beth read, but we're basically accepting the new mileage method.
Yes.
If you will.
Thank you.
Really, it's a vote to validate.
Yes.
That the district is now, is now essentially using a mileage calculation.
Should we have voted that first?
I don't think we need to.
No, I don't think it needs a vote, but I want to understand the reasoning behind the change in the numbers is based on John Stambrooks.
So to speak.
Work and so forth.
All right. Anything new? Yes, thank you. Thank you for bringing that out. Absolutely.
Reasoning of the vote.
Absolutely. Thank you. Anything else new to add? Otherwise, we're going to move to this vote. Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Fred.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Fred, go ahead.
And the only thing I would add is, and I don't know if we need to amend the, the motion, but to also reduce the assessment by.
Different, different, different motion, Fred. Different motion, different motion. Right now, we're just doing Hanson non-mandated busing line, and if, depending on how that goes, then we can move on. So any, okay, it sounds like everyone's good.
Can I add something?
Yes.
Real quick.
Quickly, David.
You know, just for context, I think, you know, when we're talking about elephants in the room and concerns we might have in regards to the vote relating to non-mandated busing, Ms. Otina and Ms. Byers made a really good point about inequities. And if one town were to vote down the non-mandated busing, what would that mean in the long term? And what would those consequences be? So, you know, just for some context, and again, someone correct me if I'm wrong here, but if, if non-mandated busing was voted down, and that in return affected our budget, and we'd have to come back to the school committee to either reassess or revote, at that point, wouldn't we be able to include non-mandated busing as an operating item if it was voted down as an article?
Yeah.
Just food for thought, but when we talk about partnership, and we talk about cost savings, and what we're doing for both communities, and how hard we're working, you know, I think it should, people should be very conscientious of the article vote, and if we want to work as a partnership, then we should support non-mandated busing as we have for the last 30 years, so then we can move forward and then work on the regional agreement and kind of iron out this process. So I just want to add that.
Okay.
Voice vote.
We're going to move to the vote then.
Roll call.
Yes, and it's a roll call, and we'll go backwards this time because I need, I need more confusion in my life. Try to be fair. Beth?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Hillary?
Yes.
Fred?
Yes.
Chris Howard, yes. David?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Oh, you guys made that easier. Okay, unanimous. So nine, nine, it needed the two-thirds of the vote carries.
Okay. Motion to amend the FY 23 costs for non-mandated busing for the town of Whitman
Second.
Any discussion? It's probably the same discussion we just had. All right, we'll go, we'll go back this way. Steve, if you don't mind.
Yes.
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 Oh, sorry, sorry, sorry. Steve, Michelle, sorry, I'm trying to tally. Michelle, Dawn.
Yes.
David, I'll vote yes. Michelle?
Nope.
I mean, Hillary.
Yes. Got you.
I, you knew I was going to mess it up.
I got you, it's fine.
Fred?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
And in the regional agreement, we're going to put, we're never doing roll call votes.
We've got names here.
Okay, next. Ready? The assessment, what part now?
Uh, yes, so it sounds like if you want to, yes, go ahead.
Okay.
You have whatever language you want to use there.
I'll, I'll use what's here, I guess. Motion to amend the operating assessment to the town of Hanson for the FY 2023 budget in accordance with the PK to 12 Whitman-Hanson Regional School District Agreement, Section 4E2 and MGL, Chapter 71, Verse 16B, at
Second.
Yeah, that's right. Sorry, I did scroll down. Discussion. Yes, Chris seconded. Discussion, David.
Uh, the changes to the assessment would just be reflecting the mileage-based assessment?
Yes.
Nothing else, right? Okay.
Yes, Dawn.
So with this recognition of savings, how else could this be used in the district? Can it be, you know, essentially it's additional reimbursement coming in, right? But is that strictly dedicated to a pass-through with savings to the towns? Or does it go in the general fund where a decision of the committee could be made based on our other needs or our other strategic plan, our related arts goal that we had? Does it need to be used to reduce assessment? I guess my question.
So no, I don't think it has to be used to reduce the assessment, but we just need to balance the budget. So something would have to be done.
Okay.
Chris?
Yeah, just through you to Ms. Byers. We voted a budget a couple of weeks ago that we know, we knew what we needed, and we knew it was going to present a hardship for Hanson particularly, and to a certain extent, and Whitman as well. And again, in the spirit of partnership, particularly with the involvement of the community members facilitating this and initiating this, I just think it's the right thing to do at this point in time to pass the savings back on to the communities. Because there'll be a time, maybe very soon, when we're coming to them for our needs, and I think we need to bear that in mind.
That's all.
Anyone else?
Yeah, and I guess I would just add to that, too. We have the five-year strategic plan, the budget, right? And so I think giving the savings back to the towns, to Chris's point, is that partnership that, you know, have a penny for every time we say that word. But I think it's important for this year, I think that with the strategic plan, our goals that we have for the committee, we know the one-to-one Chromebooks is going to present financial implications later. We haven't even gotten the robust related arts off the ground. So if we're presenting a savings this year, and if the busing reimbursement is presenting more reimbursements moving forward, this could and will be a good thing so that maybe we're not having these really difficult conversations, is it a need, is it a want, in the future? That would be my hope. If we move in this way this year, to demonstrate that we are willing to work with the towns and to give them the savings and to provide opportunities to our students.
Okay.
I just want to add, I.
Yeah, hold on, Michelle, and then Fred.
I just want to add that I agree with them. I think if we can pass the savings on to the town 100%, that's where I land.
Okay. Fred?
Two things. One, we will reap the benefits of this for many years to come. Number two, we're in this position because of the diligent efforts of a couple of citizens. I think that we sort of owe it to the towns, you know, to give them that breather, you know, that they're so, so thoroughly asking for right now in being good partners with us.
Okay, thank you, Fred. David?
Um, you know, year in and year out, ever since I was in high school, one common word, a buzzword I hear every budget season is partnership. And I just, you know, I don't disagree with anything that anyone has said, but I want to remind my colleagues sitting at this table that when we're talking about partnerships, who is our constituents? Who are the people we are representing? Those are the students, you know. Steve Boyce made a remark a couple of minutes ago about how we don't talk about education too much, and I do agree with him there. But I just want to keep in mind that with the decisions we make going forward, whether it's this year or next fiscal year onward, yes, partnership's important, but make sure it doesn't come at the expense of our students who we need to represent and who have been dealing with a really tough decade, I'd say. Not just the pandemic, opioid epidemic, Great Recession, who knows, we might be on the verge of another recession. You know, our constituents have suffered immensely, and they haven't had the services they need and that they deserved. And if we're going to provide them with the tools to succeed, we need to make sure that we are doing that. And if there is another avenue that we can explore to make sure we are achieving our goals to help our constituents, then we need to do that. And I'm not saying I disagree with returning the savings back to the town of Whitman or Hanson, but I just want to make sure when we're using the word partnership, make sure it's not coming at the expense of our constituents, which are our students who are not able to vote and aren't necessarily here every meeting, you know. So I just want people to be really aware of that, of who we represent and who we're there for is the students in this district. So don't lose sight of that.
Thanks. Dawn?
The reduction in the assessment numbers that Beth has read is a total of $250,000. I heard somebody say that we set this budget and we knew it was going to be a hardship to Hanson. I don't recall hearing that. I know in the past, towns have said they're unable to afford the assessments, and at the end of the year, when I see the Department of Revenue certify money, they end up with upwards of 1.5, 1.9 million in free cash. Certainly, that can be for various reasons, maybe not directly associated with how they're funding education from the town budget. I'm looking at this report we saw tonight, OPEB contributions from our operating budget. Nothing in 2020, nothing in 2021, 2022. $250,000, we could put it right in a line item. We could fund an OPEB assessment that both of the towns fund from their municipal budgets every year. They fund OPEB, and we do not as a district.
Very good, Chris. Yeah.
So. David, Dawn, I share your concerns and I share your sentiments. My qualifying remark was at this time, right? And again, it's about understanding the dynamics and the complexities of our partnership with keeping in mind that we're here to ultimately and eventually get to where we want to be to provide for our students with the services that we want to bring back in. A lot of this is about timing, and I think it's important that we recognize that. And again, you know, being a good partner is doing that.
But now is the time, right? Now is the time for these kids. They don't get.
Hang on, you don't.
Now is the time.
I hope to move the question.
Randy, you got something quick?
Super quick. Randy Lamontina again, selectmen. This is not found money in the budget.
No.
So the way you're actually coming up with the $250,000 is you're getting a reimbursement and still charging the town, and that's how you're making out. So it's not found money in the budget. You're overcharging us essentially because you're getting a reimbursement but saying, no, we still need that money to pay that bill. That's the problem, and I don't think that's going to fly tremendously well at town meeting. So, I mean, it really is a productive meeting where we've all found something that benefits everyone. And I would just say, I hope the meeting finishes that way.
Fair enough. Okay, any other discussion? I think the one point, I guess I'll just make, when I think of the overall budget and the initial request and where we're at, and I have listened to the selectmen's meetings in both towns pertaining to the budget, so I know they are both working towards trying to get to where they can support things. I do think, to Randy's last point, taking some of these additional reimbursable funds and reducing the operating assessment does help the towns. I also think it's important to recognize that while we maybe don't have everything we want in our budget this year, we do have a number of things that are helping us move forward. And, you know, no small matter is the no-cost full day K. That's something that's been talked about for many, many, many years, and that is here. So I do, you know, again, I'm one of 10, one of nine tonight, but I think for me, I do feel like this is a good step forward in terms of where we're trying to go. And then we do have a lot of work to do in the future in terms to planning to make sure that we do pull in a lot of the things that we need, and there's that understanding from the town's standpoint, from a fiscal standpoint. So, you know, I am, I am certainly in favor of moving forward with the motion. So any other comments? All right, we'll move to the vote. Which way did I go last time? I should just keep it the same. I went that way? So I start with you this time?
Okay.
All right. No, I'm asking. Like, I'm looking for you, Beth.
Oh.
I'm with her.
It's getting late.
You want me? Okay.
All right, go ahead.
Beth says yes.
Yes.
Yes, Chris, yes.
Oh, yes. Sorry, I'm just letting you do.
Whoever you want.
Chris Howard, yes. David, Fred?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Dawn?
No.
Michelle?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Great. Okay, so that's eight. Okay, that is.
Yes, I don't possibly ten.
That was Hanson. So now you have one more, right?
Right, okay. So my motion is to amend the operating assessment to the town of Whitman for the FY 2023 budget in accordance with the PK to 12 Whitman-Hanson Regional School District Agreement, Section 4E2 and Mass General Laws, Chapter 71, Verse 16B, at, and so Whitman operating will be $16,741,119.30.
Second.
Great, thank you, Beth. Any discussion, or have we basically had it? Had it? Had the discussion with the last one, right?
Yes.
No one new? We're good? Steve, do you mind? Steve?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Dawn?
No.
David?
Yes.
I vote yes. Fred?
Yes.
Hillary?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Okay, so that carries eight one. All right. I think that closes that one out, yes.
The overall change in the session.
Mr. Chair?
Oh, yeah, go ahead, Fred.
I'd like to make a motion to reduce the capital assessment. To reduce the assessment, the capital assessment for the town of Hanson, the amount of $51,220 from the current amount of $481,913.12. And my theory behind this is the purchase of the two trucks, I would suspect only be making a motion immediately thereafter, that we would take the money for two trucks from E and D, and therefore we can try and purchase them immediately and perhaps get out of the fast jam that's taking some towns and districts a year to buy equipment or to get, take delivery of equipment. Once approved, and I believe our E and D balance is with that.
Point of.
So, yeah, hang on. So I'm not sure those are in the budget we're voting on presently, correct? Do we have capital items on here?
These are the amounts that are required for.
Yep.
Debt service.
So do we want to put, when is our next meeting?
May 13.
Oh, so it'll be.
But can I just ask the clarifying question?
Yeah.
Didn't we already vote on that and not, and say no?
No, we said it wasn't part of the operating budget, essentially what we were saying.
Okay, okay.
This time, I think.
So Fred, what John is saying, those capital assessments are debt, correct? If I'm thinking what you're thinking, you're looking at the school committee to.
Correct.
Vote to take certain warrant articles off and use, use E and D to support warrant articles, not these assessments. These assessments are debt.
Okay, so those aren't for the capital items whatsoever?
No, not at all.
Oh, yeah, the capital line that we voted is the existing capital, right? That's, that doesn't presume the additional new items.
Those warrants went to town.
Right.
Something different than this. These are actual debt. This is high school debt. This is HVAC debt. This is different debt. We sent separate warrant articles from the committee that both Lincoln and Lisa have put on for warrants. So if you wanted to take those trucks off, that's a different, that's using E and D to take off warrant articles, not, not these line items.
Okay, so.
So.
Mr. Chair, do I, the latitude where we're talking about budget?
So let's get this done first.
Use the motion for those warrant articles?
Two separate there. Right now, let's get this done first, and then if you want to talk about that, because we're still in budget discussion.
Yeah, I know, I'm just trying to think through it. I think technically, I don't know, I feel like capital is not in budget. I think the workaround would be if the committee is so inclined, we can have a meeting and put it on the agenda.
I don't, I don't feel prepared to get into this at this point. I mean, I think if we.
Right.
Well, there's no motion either, or no second.
So right now, there's no second, Fred. But I would say that if the committee is so inclined, we can certainly, so it's done clearly and people are prepared, we could, and I'm going to, I'll save this for the very end of our conversation tonight, we could have another meeting before town meeting, put capital items on the agenda and talk through what you want to talk through now. Is that, if we, if that's, so we can leave it to the will of the committee, we can.
If that would be the will of the committee, that's fine.
Yeah.
And Mr. Stambrooks, John, do we have to vote a new, I mean, we revoked some assessment numbers. The overall town of Whitman assessment has changed. That has to be voted, correct?
We did not vote that last time, if I remember.
No, we just voted these?
Yeah, I think we just, we'll tally them in the letter, right? I don't think we need to vote it. Are we just going to do the math right?
Sure.
You know, what was previously voted for capital. You know, what was previously voted for capital plus the new for non-mandated plus.
On the March 16th meeting, you, you voted three separate amounts.
Okay.
Yeah. So Michelle, we'll just need to send out an amended letter and still change the total.
Yep. Awesome. Thank you.
Um, we are, I think we're done with that one.
You're done with budget?
That one, we're never done with budget. But we can go to John's financial reports.
John, why don't you jump up there and give us an update of where we're at, please?
Our food service director, Nadine Doucette, has been waiting for a while. I was wondering if we could.
Yes.
Have her come up, come up first or if we could just skip to that and she can.
Go ahead.
If I, if I need it. This is the, the food service price, pricing information as of yesterday, this document right here.
No. Okay, so for compliance with the National School Lunch Program. Our minimum base prices of lunches have to meet their requirements. Over the pandemic, when we shut down, we were actually going to have to raise prices. But then all meals were free, so that hasn't really been an issue. But unfortunately, the meals are not going to be funded next year for all free federally. The only thing that may happen, and it's not looking very good, is that if Massachusetts take, decides to pick up the difference. And I don't have any answer to that yet. But in order to be compliant, we'd have to raise this year's lunch prices to 318 and the breakfast meal to 159. Next year, we'd have to be at 331 and breakfast at 166. 2024, we'd have to be 347, 174. So my proposal is to raise the prices to 350 for lunch and 175 for breakfast. And in doing so, we will not have to make another, we won't have to raise it again for a little while and make sure that we are following the regulations. So do you have any questions?
And so just to clarify this, we have to do this to be compliant?
Yes.
For all of those years or just for FY 22?
So for, to be compliant, we'd have to raise it to 318 for FY 22, which we're almost done with.
Yep.
If it's to be compliant next year, it would be 330.
So those are all, all these rates are bringing us into compliance.
Yes.
Great.
If we go, if we just make the jump to the 350 and the 175, it will cover it for the next couple of years. So.
Got it. So any questions or motion? Or go ahead, Don.
And you mentioned the, the free lunches that are provided now through the federal government and that's set to expire the end of June, I think.
June 30th, yes.
Yeah, so unless the federal government votes it again, all schools in all towns will begin charging.
And now states are looking at whether or not they can afford to cover the costs for all of those that don't qualify.
Yes.
Yeah. But we want to be prepared with these rates if we need to be.
Right.
Be able to get those reimbursables.
Thank you.
Chris?
Does this require a vote?
Yes.
Yeah, very nominal price increase.
Yep. You want to make that motion?
I will make.
All right. So Chris is, you're making a motion to accept as presented?
Yes.
Great.
The new price, the 350?
Correct. The price is.
All the way through, so it would be FY 22, 23, 24.
Well, it's too, she wants to go to two, 350 now.
Right. Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah.
Excuse me, Michelle brought up a good point, like when would this go into effect? This would go into effect at July 1.
July 1.
So we're voting to go to 350 for lunch and 175 for breakfast?
So she doesn't have to come to us every year.
630, 24. Got it.
Yep.
Okay.
Voice, voice seconded.
Steve seconded. Any other discussion? Chris motion, Steve seconded. Thank you. Everyone's good? Steve, you mind? Steve?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Chris, yes. Fred?
Yes.
Hillary?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Yeah, great.
Thank you.
Thanks, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So this is the monthly report. This is on the quarters. Do a little bit more in depth, but I know we're getting a little bit later, so I'll.
Yeah, you can probably keep it brief. Anything we need to know, because then you have that other proposal too, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
So the, the first document is the balance sheet comparison. Well, first of all, let me go back. You, you should have gotten the report through March of, for fiscal year '22. It was a 19-page document. It looks like, looks like this. It's, just gives an outline of where we are through March. Right now, we, on a, a budget of $56,797,000, we're, we received 42 million. We still have $14,449 to go on the revenue. Again, on the expenses, the, we have spent $39,770,000 through March. And I can go through more of it as, when I go to these other documents, which are the comparison documents between last year and this year. The next document is the balance sheet comparison. It has the fiscal year '21 column through March and then the fiscal year '22 column through March for balance sheet items. You see cash is up 199,000, a 3.82%. Accrued payrolls and withholdings are down. And then under the reserves, total fund equities, I did something for March is, I put in the end of the year FY '21 numbers. And so then we could just extrapolate that out as we go forward through the last three months of the year. Last year's reserve for encumbrances were 553,000. Again, I'm rounding numbers off. So I assume that for this year, just that we aren't at the end of the year. We don't have any encumbrances yet, but I'm just assuming that we would have the same amount as last year. The reserve for expenditures is 526,000. That's the amount of free, of excess and deficiency or E and D that you're going to be using, plus a small amount of the next reserve of band and bond premiums that has to be, be used every year. So the total of the fund equities are 4.998 versus 4.627 from last year are up $371,000. So again, the way to look at this is if the fiscal year ended on March 31st, this is where we would be. Of course, it doesn't end there, but we're just trying to, I'm trying to come up with something to have some sort of comparison of where we are from year to year. The second part of that document is the revenue expenditure comparisons. Again, they're broken down by types of revenue year to year. We're up 1.995 as a total revenue or 4.95% in the general fund. And then the expenditures are broken down by functions, DESI functions. And you can see the, the differences there. And through March, we're at 39,770 or we've, we've spent 2.45 more than last year or a 6.59% increase. And then down below, there's just the fund balance activities of where, what's going on from one year to the next. So, and again, I went through this stuff very quickly and I can talk more if you'd like. But the, that's what's going on with that sheet. The next sheet is the one that's actual comparisons. These are just the expenditures from year to year through March. In the past, in the quarters, I've highlighted items that would stand out in each function. And they are the same functions as have been the last few quarters. Again, the total down the bottom is 2.459 or a 6.59% increase. I can go through, if you'd like, for more, but that's where we are there. And then the final document there is, in this is the, the revenue expenditure schedule. And this is for every other fund other than the general fund through March. And it's broken out by grants, by revolving funds, by gifts, by capital projects, trust funds and agencies. And these are the, the balances, the beginning balance, the revenues up to March, transfers in and out, and then expenditures to give you the ending balance as of right now. The ones that are shaded on this document are, are negative. But those, those amounts that are shaded are negative only because of timing issues. We've applied for grants and haven't got the money yet and we didn't get, get the money in time. There are no deficits as of right now, other than, because especially on page two of that document with Whitman Capital Repairs and, and High School Capital Repairs. The, just the timing, I've billed the towns and they just haven't, we haven't received the, the payment yet. It's not, it should not be a problem at all. Again, there's a large one on page three. It's what the auditors were talking about earlier, that's a Hanson HVAC at the middle school. And that looks bad, is a million 61 for a deficit. But we have a bond anticipation note of 1,65,000, something like that, that, that covers that amount. So it's a technical deficit, but it isn't a real deficit. We, we have the money and we're going to roll that note in June in order to, that we won't have a deficit in any of those funds. So that's the speed reading version of the quarterly report. If you'd like to have more, one other quick thing too, I included in your packet was every month I've been giving deficit updates. So what I, what I did was I'm going to split the, I mean, I don't know if this will work or not. I didn't get a chance to talk to the budget subcommittee about it, but it was on the agenda for the last meeting. It was to break up the general fund costs by, you know, regular day costs and special education costs to find out which deficits are, are, you know, need to be funded, I guess, by the end of the year. And with the thinking that special education costs should be funding other special education costs with transfers, regular day costs should fund regular day costs if possible. So these two sheets were the special education portion of where, this, this is very small print that, thank God I have my glasses on so I can read it. These are the, this is the extrapolation out until the end of the year of every single general fund special education cost. The way to read this is to look down the bottom where it says variance of 117,185,11. That's the amount as of right now, what I would think we would turn back from the special education costs that were approved in the FY 22 budget. So the appropriated budget that was special, special education related was 11.7 million down the bottom there. The forecasted sped turnback as of right now, again, things can change, are 117,185,11. So right now, the percentage that, of sped costs that are forecasted to be turned back are 1%. That's how to look at that. The second page is if we were to do transfers tonight, and it's on the agenda, but these would be the transfers in the special education of where the money's coming from and where the money's going to. If this works, I'll do it for the, I'm almost done with the other regular day portion of the budget. It'll be a little bit more lengthy than this. But this will be a breakdown of where those transfers will come from. So hopefully by the next meeting, we'll have a transfer, a realistic transfer number. And you could, the, the school committee can decide what they would like to do with it. I don't know if that makes sense or not, but it's a little bit different than the monthly thing that I've been sending in the past. Any questions or?
Nope.
John, you want to go to the next piece about the?
On the capital project?
Disposition of funds, please?
Yes. Okay. So the next one is the capital projects disposition. This was talked about at the last budget subcommittee meeting. There are, these are funds that have been on the district's books for quite, quite a while. The cover sheet shows the, what the funds are. They start with 6,001 high school band premiums. It goes to 6,009 high school debt refunding. Those two, we've already talked about at a previous meeting. Those were old band and bond premiums that have to be reserved in the general fund. So we've taken care of them. That's why they're shaded out. It's the other ones from 6,002 to 6,008. Those are amounts that, that have been on the books, some of them with the ADA compliance project and the football study, sometime earlier than fiscal year 2000, at least 20 years. And I was bringing it forward to the committee for what, I'd like to try to clean these items up, these funds up one way or another, get them off the books if possible. If not, that's fine. So the, the sheet that I came up with was the amount. And then the things I thought of, of what you could do with them. The first one, of course, is do nothing. You can always do nothing and we've been doing that. Then number two is to be closed, to close them and just transfer that, whatever money is there to the general fund at the end of the year. We could return the, the amounts to the towns before June 30th, '22. It would be somewhat difficult to do 6,002 and 6,003 because we don't know who they came from, from, from what towns they came. So it, I don't know how we could do that, but that is a choice you could have. Or we could keep the funds, spend on similar projects. That's number four. And then I put number five in, just in case you can come up with something else that I can't think of. So this is kind of a, more of a discussion and to see what the committee would like to do with it.
Yeah, so this came up with the budget subcommittee and we did talk about, I think we talked about using it for other projects. We talked about returning to the towns. Maybe even going to articles. But I think we quickly realized that it was really out of the scope of the budget subcommittee because we were going to need to make a decision. So we can certainly rehash some of that that was shared and the pros and cons. But that's, that's why we really wanted to bring it here because we just felt it was going to be futile to just try and make a recommendation when ultimately the committee was going to have to decide. So, yes, Beth?
So what I'd like to see done is the ones that are specific to each town, like Hanson, like 6,004, 6,005 go specifically to Hanson, six and eight go to Whitman. And those other two that we do not know, add them together and split them between the two towns. Because since we don't know which one to give them to, I say add the 12,736,20 and the 165,16 together, divide them and give them back. I say, give them back to the town at this point. Everybody was talking about doing things and helping out the towns. Granted, it's not a lot of money, but it was their projects. And so that's, that's just my opinion.
Yep. Thank you. Other comments? David?
I mean, I pretty much agree with Beth on this. Anything that says specifically towards Hanson, specifically towards Whitman, I think should be returned at this point. As for the ADA compliance project and the football study, we talked about it briefly during budget subcommittee. I know, Stanbrook, you were saying you were unable to find the origins. If we're able to do that, I think that would be ideal just because I think the idea of taking and splitting it 50/50 might be, maybe possibly more complicated than it needs to be, you know? And that's only my concern there. But if we're able to find the origins and figure out which towns that could go to, I think it would make sense to return it to them. But as for 6,004 and 5 to Hanson and 6,006 and 8, I mean, I think that would make sense to go back to Whitman. My only concern that I see here, and we talked about it briefly during the subcommittee, is just the vault roof. Just making sure we're not, you know, taking away anything that may be need for that if it is. But to my understanding, we kind of addressed that in that, doesn't seem to be a concern unless anyone has anything to say right now. But yeah, so I, I agree. That's kind of where I'm at.
The only thing I think I threw out, just to make sure we all have the same data points. So I agree with Beth and David. 6,004 through 8, I fully believe should be returned. It was, you know, voted at town meeting for specific projects. The only thing I suggested for 2002 and 3 was to hang on to them until we're done because John's not done. So rather than do like a piecemeal of, hey, we're not sure, let's get, let's, so, you know, we could certainly authorize John as he comes with other ones that are identified to either town to return them. But then when he's done, maybe look at the full list and then just either have a communication or meeting and see if we can get consensus, maybe with the two town administrators to say, this is what we found, this is what we'd like to do. Are you both good with it? I would hate to be in a situation where we do something and then, well, technically it's not a 60/40 split. So no good deed sometimes goes unpunished. But to me, the 4 through, 6,004 through 6,008, completely clear. So I don't know if that makes sense to you.
Do we need a motion?
Yeah, if we could, so I would, maybe we could, so John, tell me, before we make the motion, if we made a motion to say that as you identify these type of capital funds and they belong to a town, that you just disperse them as reasonably fit with the understanding that the other ones, we're just going to compile until we get the full list.
Okay.
We're not going to go anywhere, not going to be spent, we just put them off to the side. Something, something like that, does that work?
Yes.
I don't know if you feel comfortable turning that into a motion. Yeah.
So this list is not inclusive of all accounts that have balances?
He's still working through accounts. He's still cleaning up. So this is a partial work in progress.
So it's only a preview?
It's, yes.
Yes. And John, being John, said, I'm kind of uncomfortable with what I found just sitting on it. And we said, of course, bring it.
So look at this and guess what? There's more.
There's probably. There's probably more. So, I mean, we could make it simple, just say you just bring it to the committee and we'll just deal with it. Maybe then there's transparency so we know. But we can certainly, I think we should, can we get a motion to say for six thousand four through six thousand eight, those will be returned to the respective town?
So I move.
Second.
Great. Any other discussion on that? Everyone's reasonably okay? We'll call vote. Steve? Michelle?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
I'll vote yes. Fred?
Yes.
Hillary?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Great.
Thanks, Sean.
Thank you, John.
All right, where are we going next?
So we had a, an equity audit review, and let me just tell you how, how that came about. When I became superintendent and the first couple of meetings I met, I remember that group NISIP with the superintendent orientation group training that I had, or it was an orientation. The focus of, of our induction was really looking at equitable services for all students in your district. And certain districts were way ahead of the game. Our district, we haven't really done a review to see if we are servicing all of our students or providing an equitable education for every student pre-K to twenty-two. So we talked about that this, this summer. I put George as, as point person, and we had this review done. We could spend a full meeting going through this, and I know you have it in your packet, you've been able, or in the, in the drive to review it, but I wanted George to give you a couple of bullet points of where we're at. And this is going to be an ongoing conversation. I know Mr. Boyce talked about students. We'd like to bring this back about students a little bit at every meeting, and this is, this is what we're doing as a leadership team, looking at where we can, we can improve ourselves to make sure we are servicing every student in, in district. So George?
Sure. I can be brief, I know it's eight forty-two. Basically what happened is you all have the audit in front of you. Jeff described why we did it, and I just wanted to bring you up to speed on not only the audit itself, because there are six pages of findings in it, but basically what we've done since we've received it. What we use this audit for internally was to identify the areas that we need to work on. The biggest areas that we need to work on as a district are our MTSS framework and why we needed it, which is tied to the ESER law, is our state of English learners. We are now leaving a low incidence district. We are now a moderate incident district and all of the ramifications and issues and things that come with that. And then we also really want to use it for what do we consider equity to mean? I think the easiest definition I can come up with, and I, I tried to make this about me, is that if you look at a person who's vertically challenged, right, not that tall, what does equity mean to that person? So if you look at that person who's trying to get into the cupboard to get a box of cereal, equity means that that person, every person has the ability to be able to get what they need in order to be successful. So if you're a short person like myself, I might need a two-step in order to get to that cupboard to get the cereal. Somebody who's tall, I'll go with Scriven, I guess, he's the only guy here that's taller. I would say, I would say doesn't need that, he can just grab it. But at the end, we can both access that box of cereal because we have the tools and the things that we need to do it. Another one you might talk about, because I'm wearing glasses now because I screwed up my contacts, is somebody who has vision, somebody who has maybe a vision impairment. Kids go to this school, people who come to this building, and if you're, if you have an issue seeing, you wear glasses, you wear contacts, you do all of those things. Some of us, and that helps you get around and orient yourself around the building. Some of us don't have that ability because we've lost our ability to see whatsoever. So you will notice that on our signs, they're in braille because everyone now has the ability to enter the building and orient themselves or get to where they need to go in the building because it's equitable. Not everything we do, not everything we have in this district is equitable. So what this is doing is giving us a blueprint based on law and then based on the things we need to do to establish equity in the district. It really centers around a working definition of equity. It really centers around our MTS framework of intervention, and it really centers around our EL population. It also centers around our students who are of color or have different orientation as far as their sexual orientation. It also, though, leads to what we're trying to do in our next budget item is the creation of an equity and MTSS director. Jeff talked about this a little bit last month, or last time we had a meeting, and we are now looking at splitting some of the positions that we have. We have a, a student services director. We're looking to split that back into a special ed director because that's big enough in itself for the size of the district. And then we're looking to internally post for an MTSS and equity director. And that person is really galvanizing not only this document, but galvanizing what equity means in Whitman-Hanson as we move forward. This document is a blueprint. Talks about policy. It talks about some of the other things. I also want to let the committee know that when it talks about our EL population, one of the biggest things it talked about was to have a separate curriculum for those students because they do need it based on their individual reading level. We were able to establish that this year, and we are able, we are, we've identified a program that we are going to buy that will be used along with the work that there is done in the regular classroom for EL students. But we have identified a company that we're going to go with to provide that curriculum. It is actually a low-cost curriculum, and it's easily absorbed within the budget that we currently have. So what this has done is paved the way for our next steps, and it's a blueprint for what we need to do as we move forward. It's talked about with the superintendents, it's talked about with the mass superintendents group, it's talked about in the law of ESER, it's talked about in educator evaluation, which is law six oh three point five, and it's talked about in EL language. And this is the next natural step that I think we need in the evolution of Whitman-Hanson. I can take questions, but I'd also then like to segue, if you could, to the job description that we have in front of you. There's a job description that you have in front of you for equity and MTSS director. I'd like to call that MTSS because that's, that's a long word, that's a bunch of words if not. But if we have an MTSS director, you will see specific things that that job, that that person is responsible for. This job description was a culmination of districts that we went through, we asked about, we talked about, both in Massachusetts and nationally. And it was also based on research. And we culled and we put some things together so that we feel that in an internal posting, we can cover this and make Whitman-Hanson move or step forward in the right direction so that we can do what's best for all of our students, all of our staff, and then the resulting community.
Motion to accept or approve the MTSS.
Job description, great. And Fred has dropped off, so we are no longer doing roll call votes. So I appreciate Fred attending, but I appreciate not doing any more roll call votes. Any discussion? Yes.
Okay, this is for this year?
This would be for this coming school year.
Coming school year, so is that money in our budget?
That money will be, is in the budget because it's going to be part of the reorganization that the superintendent discussed last year. There will be no greater impact to the budget.
Other comments, questions?
Can, can you remind us of that reorganization?
So, so.
Thank you.
So as Lauren vacates her position, she used to be the, the director of student services. That job has become over encompassing, and we have people in district in special education that we can grow their position and accommodate this position by taking some things away from the current Lauren position.
Okay.
Like EL, like a few things that became overwhelming for her.
I think my, yeah, thank you. Because my question was going to be, you know, next meeting, are you going to come with us with a candidate to fill Lauren's position? In my mind, I was thinking.
No. We have that contract to approve tonight, so.
Parameters.
Yes, we're just starting that.
Okay.
So we're looking at this, how could we absorb this? And we have people, we have positions in district, we can move what they do now to make this whole for us and make us a better district.
Okay.
Right. And so, and basically, you're going to be looking at the special ed and accommodations and testing aspect, and then you're going to be looking at the EL and student services aspect, and we're separating those, those pieces. And with the MTSS framework that we've instituted all year, there have been a number of people who we feel can succeed and move forward with a restructuring that is not, that is not a greater impact to the budget. But it'll have to be posted and everything.
Yes.
Quick question. I understand that this came from the audit.
Yeah.
Well, yes and no. We talked about this last year. As we were going to MTSS and, and the interventionist coaches, that started that dialogue. And then over the summer and this year, we, we realized with, with some of the data from the audit, said, hey, look, you could do this. And then the spurning off was when Lauren had the conversation with me saying, my job is becoming over encompassing. And it just brought us to, what can we do district-wide to make this better and service our kids in the, in the, in the most efficient way, hitting the cores that we want to hit?
Understood. And I didn't mean to mischaracterize the evolution of this.
Yeah, it just didn't come directly.
Yeah.
It's a recommendation, but it was something we talked about last year.
So we're, we're using the audit to, the audits help us identify areas where there's inequity.
Correct. Yes, absolutely correct. Correct.
So that's great. My question pertains to the future. Like how is, how are these going to be identified and what's that process going to look like? And I see a little bit of continuous improvement in programs and systems and collaborating with stakeholders, but if you could just maybe get into that a little deeper, I'm curious to.
Sure. So, so the person, so if we take the job and then you look at the, the audit globally, one of the, the first major hurdle we have to do and the first major decision we have to do is what's the working definition of equity in Whitman-Hanson? That, that's going to be with stakeholders, that's going to be with a working group. There is also policy implications when you look at what takes place for equity from a teaching standpoint, as it's based on their edit valve, and then what takes place just from a normal policy point when we talk about gender, race, ethnicity, sexual orientation, all of those pieces. But then when we talk about the actual everyday components of it, this person's going to be responsible for our whole MTSS framework and then responsible for our EL components. Other than that, they're also going to be responsible for things like analyzing the curriculum to make sure the curriculum is one that is representative of all the groups that, of all the groups of students that we have in school. So it's going to be not only in school, but it's going to be connected to a working group that would be comprised of like our wellness committee, that would be comprised of staff, that would be comprised of, I'm sure, school committee representation, that would be comprised of parent or teacher or student even representation based on the level. But that is what this job would entail.
Thank you.
Great.
Thank you.
Any other discussion?
So just one follow-up as I'm reading through this. It, it's around like page eleven, but it, it refers to our district policy. And maybe this is something to look ahead towards because it talks about definition of equity in our mission statement. So something in the future to hone in on and, and maybe, you know, pull from this, another piece that we can improve on.
Absolutely. And the reason for this really is that, I'll put this in a nice statement, is that when we talk about equity, I was at a, a deficit from knowledge, and that's one of the reasons why we wanted to get an outside opinion to make sure we're doing things as best we can.
Great. Any other discussion? All right. Remember, we're raising our hands this time, mercifully. All right, we'll move to the vote. All those in favor?
Thank you.
Very unanimous. All right, we're going to jump around a little bit.
Thanks, George.
Just because I want to hit a couple of things, just looking at some folks that are here, waiting for certain things. So real quick, I want to jump to the school committee liaison role, which was number fifteen. So this was an item that had come up in a previous meeting. Mike had asked about the role, and then he had followed up with me and said, hey, what is, what is this liaison role? What is it? So I had reached out to Randy. He had sent me the selectmen's handbook, shared it with all of you. It does have the definition in there. And, you know, my main takeaway here was that it's really about the communication between the boards. I saw that as defined in the, in the role. The other thing is, you know, from time to time, I have reached out to the respective board chairs of selectmen or just giving them a heads up, like, hey, you might want to pay attention to busing, for example, or pay, pay attention to the meetings, you know, there's things that we're working through. But when I last reached out to Carl, he did point out that Randy was liaison. So basically, the, you know, I'm going to, if there's something that comes up like that, hey, you might want to attend this meeting, this is what we're talking about. My plan going forward would be I'll continue to do the Hanson board chair, but I'm going to reach out to Randy. Randy is the liaison going forward. So that is the plan. If Carl, if I misunderstood Carl, let me know, but I'm pretty sure that's what he was suggesting, so. You can see the chair to lead it, so. Yeah, yeah.
So that, that's typically how the Whitman board does it. We're all assigned different departments and you kind of take the lead and.
Right.
A conduit for information or delivery of.
Yeah. And Carl was very clear that that was the desire, so I'm going to follow it. That's why I wanted to bring it out publicly. So if somebody changes their mind, they can let me know, but otherwise, that's sort of what I do because.
Mind if I ask a question?
Yeah, of course.
Just make a statement. So when this all comes to us, you know, it, it kind of concerned me that, and I'm glad it was Randy sending you the book, because I know Mr. Jones didn't have a real, I don't know, he, he just jumped out some words and like, who is this? And I know we all know who Randy is, and Randy, we apologize for that first of all, and recognize you that because you've done this for so long, I just didn't want this to end up being something like here. And we're going to read him the riot act because, you know, I was already getting ready to be arrested crossing the Whitman Town Line. I didn't want to get ready again. My point is, is just can we footnote a little bit, why, why are we seeing this?
Yeah, so I think Mike's question was what is the role of the liaison? Which I think is a very fair question because I'm not sure it really was defined. So what Randy did was he said, here's the definition, and he sent the definition. So now we all know what the role of the liaison is rather than trying to guess of, well, what is the role of the liaison? So we have it, it's words, black and white, opposed to, well, what does that mean? What does it not mean? So that was really, I think anytime we can share understanding so that we're on the same page, that's the objective.
I just wasn't getting the understanding because the words that I went away with was, wasn't that from, from Mike? And I'm not criticizing Mike, but I heard, well, who is he, who is he right now?
Right.
It was one of the statements. And I, you know, I kind of take those things to heart, like, we, we really know who he is, and I don't know, to me, it just presented off.
Yeah.
To be honest with you, Steve, I, I didn't take anything from it personally.
Yeah.
I think we've all had conversations that have been tense at times, and I don't take them personal. But like I said, my role is just to provide information back, attend more of these meetings. And, but what I never do is make a, I'm never going to make a decision on my own. So I want, just want that to be clear, that any decision-making is done at a, at a full board level.
Perfect. And I think that's all that we were, that's all I was looking to clarify in terms of understandable. Yes.
Does the Hanson Board of Selectmen have liaisons?
No.
Okay.
Yes.
When Randy, I can jump in. When Randy was appointed, when I became superintendent, I did ask Hanson if they could have a FinCom person or a selectman person, and that never came to fruition. Yes?
I know a year ago, when we were talking about the 2014 DESI report, and we were talking about forming a budget subcommittee as far back as then, and then we were talking about the role of liaisons. I guess my question would be, do we have a well-defined definition of liaison and what role they would play to the school district, whether it's one from Hanson or one from Hans, one from Whitman? And then my other question, and it was pretty similar to Ms. Snipens, is do we have any And then my other question, and it was pretty similar to Ms. Nippens, is do we have any liaisons from Hanson to the school committee? I know we have Ms. Otina and Mr.
Not that I'm aware of it, doesn't mean they don't, but not that I'm aware of.
Correct.
So we can, I can certainly clarify. I'll ask, I think that's a good point.
We can check them out.
Just so we don't ruffle feathers of, hey, you know, we talked about liaison and if there's anything you want us to understand and how you want to do it.
Opportunity for transparency and communication is what we're here for.
I agree.
All right. Um, and then you want to do school choice? Because I think, I'm trying to get the ones where people are waiting around because they need to either listen what we have to say or they're going to be in.
Chris, you okay with that?
Sure.
If you bounce the school choice? So, so the budget sub, or budget subcommittee, the run of the subcommittee, I don't know. We've been talking about school choice with the policy subcommittee. It came up as an agenda item every year. Uh, and we, I've learned some new things too. I was, I did not know that school choice is the standard across the Commonwealth and you actually have to recuse yourself from school choice. It used to be that you had to opt into school choice, but you had to do it by a certain time. The new regs by DESI is it's assumed that every school committee or every district is choice. And then the school committee by June 1st has to decide whether or not they're going to accept kids from other districts or not. So the policy subcommittee has tasked, um, answered, or asked a lot of questions. We actually have Dr. Jones here. He's the primary person for school choice. We have been open since 2000, Michelle, what, 2013, 2014 to school choice at the high school, grades nine and 10. We have discussed it. There's a, there's a financial piece to this, um, that when we brought choice in, it, there was a financial benefit. Right now, it's a, it's a, we have kids going out for choice. And let me just clarify. If we decide, no matter what the committee decides for school choice, our students can opt out to go to any school in the Commonwealth. We cannot prohibit them because we are not school choice. That doesn't go that way. We, if we decide to go not school choice, we just don't accept anybody. Our kids can still go. Our kids go to Tecca, they go to East Bridgewater, they go to Abington, they go to Brockton right now. That's where we have some of our kids. So tonight, the policy subcommittee is going to speak on this. They do have a recommendation, uh, for, for next year. And again, by June 1st, I have to report to the department, uh, whether or not we're a school choice district. So I don't know, Chris, if you want to take it from there.
Sure. Yeah. So we, we, as Jeff said, we've had lengthy discussions about this. And, um, you know, the effort is to get a, our best understanding of, um, the impact, positive and negative. And, um, we basically, we've got some data from Principal Jones this afternoon and, um, we did take a, a vote to, uh, recommend that we no longer participate in school choice because as we see it, the, the negatives just ultimately outweigh the positives. And one of the positives, um, as Jeff mentioned, was financial. And, um, Jeff provided some information in our subcommittee meeting tonight that was a little clarifying in that, um, it's not going to be as a drastic of a hit, so to speak, initially. It's, it's kind of, we'll lose a little bit maybe the first year and you could probably explain it better than I could, Jeff.
So, so just a little bit. If, if we close school choice this year, I lose seniors and I lose any incoming freshman or sophomores, any incoming choice. Right now, we're, we're estimated to, to get $300,000 in school choice revenue for FY '23. That doesn't mean we lose 309,000 for next year. What it means is we will lose those seniors or as they trend, the, the loss of the kids this year graduating and the loss of incoming students. So next year, you'll lose a little more, next year, you'll lose a little more till that, till all our choice kids have graduated. Because the law states, if we close this year, they don't leave. We own those students, they've committed to us until they graduate. So whoever's here for choice stays until they graduate, that's the law. But we don't have to accept any new students.
If I could just continue.
And I think.
Is that, is that clear?
Can I add a little bit? I think, so to Jeff's point, it's a, we, we can revisit this each year. So it's not a, it's not a binding vote, that's important. But I, I want to provide some background as to like what caused us to spend so much time on school choice. Dr. Jones gave us a document, you all have it, you have a hard copy of it, but it's also in the folder, um, with statistics regarding students, school choice students at the high school and what programs they are involved in. Particularly, we wanted to focus, I mean, I can speak for myself, I think Michelle and Chris do. Our main focus was making sure that we weren't taking opportunities away from resident students. And it, you know, what concern I had was AP courses, but we talked about how they just will make another AP course. So what it really came down to, unfortunately or fortunately, and you can see, um, on the document that you have, I think it's the third page, is athletic participation. And so what Dr. Jones gave us was the cut sports and the number of school choice students who participated or who were on those teams, um, give or take, or in those programs. You can see some as freshmen, some as JV. The way that I look at this, um, if we look at this past year, 2021 to 2022, if you look at boys' basketball, right? I think Dr. Jones in our policy subcommittee meeting said that they had 100 boys try out. If we look at this from the, the lens that I was, what was motivating me was you've got four spots that were taken away from Whitman, Hanson, resident students. And we've been talking on this committee about engagement. We have a lot of challenges in getting our community members to buy into our budget and sort of what we're selling. And, um, I think that a really good way to, um, harm the culture is for a student athlete who has been playing with his friends or her friends through all the youth sports and then they get to high school and they don't make a freshman team because a kid who moved in from another town does. And now those parents are now disengaged. Why am I going to do this? Why am I going to do that? And I just think that that, to me, that's where the problem lies. And I spoke at the policy, policy subcommittee meeting, you know, myself personally, my kids are young, they're nine, eight and six. So I don't, I don't know, and, and friends of my kids don't know that there's a possibility that your kid who's been playing sports, town sports with all their friends can get to the high school and not make a team. There could be five of you who don't make a team. And, you know, it might be, you know, you look at one, you're like, oh, it's just one kid, but that's one opportunity that was taken away from a Whitman, Hanson resident. And we talked at policy sub about the financial implications and that was a huge piece, right? Because I don't think that we want to get into the habit of making decisions that might harm our students because financially they make sense. But with Jeff's explanation, we decided that it makes really good sense if we want to promote engagement, if we want to promote culture of the school community. You know, athletics to me seems to be the only place where choice students involvement takes opportunity away from other students. And I'm not sure that that is in the best interest of our resident students.
So can I just ask, what was the committee vote on the recommendations? I know it was in favor, okay. So, okay, that's, I think that's helpful. Okay. Done, question?
First, are we voting on school choice tonight?
Yes. I think that is the plan and I need to open the public hearing shortly. As you've finished speaking.
Oh, okay.
I'll just say the public hearing is open now.
Oh, the public hearing is open now. I know we have a lot of folks that have been waiting.
Yes, open the public hearing.
But the public hearing is.
I, is the, do we have numbers on total number of choice students coming in right now? Do we have a report of that?
Yeah, it's all right here.
Which page?
The, well, the first page.
Total number of kids.
The last, Dr. Jones, I don't know if Dr. Jones wants to speak this, but the last, the first page has the trends. So this year, there are 50 choice students. So 2021 to 2022 out of 1095.
Oh, this graph, sorry.
Yep. And then he breaks it down also.
He breaks it all down.
On the bottom.
Key points, I think it's.
Okay, so that's the number in the parentheses?
Yes.
So it's 50?
Yes.
50, okay. So it's 50 kids coming in right now.
Well, they're here.
Yeah, in the.
They're in district.
Yep.
So, coming to us.
And, and they will, if the vote is to.
Close.
Use ourself or whatever it's, um, they'll be allowed to stay.
They graduate here if they so choose.
What concerns me or the information we don't have about these 50 kids, and, and I know you pointed out that, you know, basketball has four choice students, so that's four opportunities taken away. I'm, I'm not as concerned with athletics in school choice as I am about the, the opportunity for a student whose parents have a certain need and they end up moving out of town. And we need to maintain that relationship that that student has within the district. That is a social emotional piece for a student. And you talk about an opportunity being taken away from a district student because of an athletic position and so forth. I'm concerned about taking away an opportunity for a student to maintain their, their.
Stability.
Yeah, their stability. Thank you, Mr. Ford. The, the other, um, comment that right now, school choice students seem to be only athletics has taken away that opportunity? I'll be honest, as a district, we don't offer very many opportunities for the arts. We don't have a year-round theater program, drama program, music program, you know, so band, march, we don't even have really a marching band. So I, I need to be honest to say that if we had those things, maybe there'd be choice kids coming in and, you know, taking spots away from those or, or have a desire to join those groups if we were offering that as a product. I, I'm, I'm very concerned that we are, we are now limiting, um, something else for, for students.
But we're not limiting it for the students in our district. I think that's what drove us to have this conversation. One of the questions that we had for Dr. Jones was why are students coming here for choice? What are, to your point, we don't have any of those things, so why are they coming here? Right? That, that was the driving piece for me. And if you look at, there's 13, so, you know, the percentages and things like that, you know, a student moving aside, the, the bigger picture is what is driving students here? And my task, and I think David talked about it earlier, our task is our constituents, our students and providing them with opportunities. And I see this as something that is taking opportunities away.
David, David.
I'll come back.
Yeah, yeah. So, so two words that come into my mind when talking about school choice is, is equity and disparity. Because the way I look at it from my, uh, point of view, uh, spending time in the high school and knowing a lot of kids who either, um, were taken away and put into a foster home and they lacked the stability and they were able to come back to this district, um, or people have moved away or they don't have good home situations. I don't think people seem to understand that these kids, um, love Whitman, Hanson. I mean, that when we talk about culture, when we talk about, uh, well-being, Whitman, Hanson, not just at the high school, but in general, the community has done such a great job over the years at providing the stability, at providing, uh, a sense of belonging in this community. And I think people who come here want to stay here. And when we talk about, um, a lot of kids moving out over the last decade or so, or last seven years, I mean, we can talk about universal full day K or we can talk about the services Ms. Byers was just talking about. In regards to, to losing opportunity in sports, and while I understand that and, and I appreciate the great work of the policy subcommittee, I, I don't personally view it in that, from that standpoint because these kids have the opportunity to try out and they're chosen based on their ability. So if they have the talent, if they have, um, if they can do the job, then, then they're chosen to do it. So I don't really look at it that way. And when we talk about school choice and we talk about, you know, our district kids, we got to understand that a lot of these kids who are coming into this district from what I've seen personally, and I don't know what the case is necessarily right now, um, a lot of people have moved out of district and want to come back in and that's why. So it's not necessarily kids within our community, it's kids who have left our community, um, through circumstances that are beyond their control and now are choosing to stay because this is what they know, this is what they love, this is their stability, this is their belonging. So I think by keeping school choice, you're actually keeping that culture and you can say, you know, you're always welcome in Whitman, Hanson. And that's something that I, I think is a big part of it. And I understand the financial aspect and I understand the opportunity aspect, but I think you're going to get the best bang for your buck by providing these kids with the opportunity. And as long as we continue to do our job and we provide these services, you're going to have students come back here. Because I think context is key and I was saying that earlier, you got to think about the last five to 10 years where we've been cutting and reducing services during a great recession, during, during an opioid epidemic. And now we have a pandemic going on and these kids have not received the services that they need. And there's a huge disparity in that regard. However, I think some of the, the things that they find comforting and helpful to them is the stability that they have, knowing that they can come back here, they can see their friends and they can just be a part of the community. So I, I wholeheartedly support school choice because I've seen it firsthand, I've seen these students and I, I know them. I are, you know, I knew them quite well. And I, I've seen the benefits of having an opportunity to be able to stay here, to be able to come here despite whatever socioeconomic situation you have or whatever may be going on personally, you know that from, from the time you wake up, you're going to be in this school district and you're going to be with people who you know care about you, um, and, and you feel a sense of belonging and, and I think that goes a long way. So I, I see in the short term, I understand the financial impact and the athletic opportunity impact, but I think as long as we continue to do our job as a committee and offer these services and offer this opportunity and support these kids, that I think in the long-term impact that really by keeping school choice open, you're only going to benefit this district. So that's how I look at it. And, and in terms of, um, you know, kids, again, like I just said, as kids leaving the district, I think as long as we continue to provide services and address the inequities that are currently going on, for example, like I said before, full day K and tuition, um, then you're going to see less of that. But we need to do our job and I just feel like by voting down school choice, we're turning away opportunities for students to be able to continue doing what they're doing. And, and, uh, yeah, I, I guess that's just how I look at it. From what I've seen, um, in the school district and, and personal experience, I just, I, I cannot vote against school choice. I think it is important, it's imperative to have the opportunity for these people to continue having the stability that they need and that they deserve. And when we're talking about tools to succeed, sometimes having that sense of belonging, having that stability, having that benefits to your mental health, it will go a long way and you never know, right? I mean, you could have a kid who is just very committed to Whitman, Hanson and school choices provide them with that opportunity and they just, you know, they love the community and they want to get involved and who knows, they could be right here, right? So, so I really think we should think about that and we should consider that. But as far as I stand, I respect everyone else's position. And again, I want to put emphasis, I really appreciate the work of the policy subcommittee, but I, I personally support school choice and that's where I'll stand.
Okay. Hold on. Jeff has been waiting for a while and I know Chris is here, so I'd like.
It's just an update. So, so DESI changed their policy a little bit too in 19. Cause we used to be able to say, keep kids, even if, you know, if, if, one of my cells to, to Dr. Whitner was, look, I think we can expand out if a student isn't in grades nine or 10, can we keep them if they're a junior and going into their senior under school choice? Yes. In 2019, they revised that to say, no, you can't. Okay? However, there's a stipulation. If the school committee agrees to allow me to solicit, so if, if Ms. Byers and her daughters moved to Abington and, and wanted her daughter to stay here, I could call the Abington Superintendent if you gave me that liberty to say, we could keep kids here and make a deal with the Abington Superintendent to either keep them cost-free here or tuition them in, but they can't be classified as school choice. So that's the opportunity there, but there would have to be an agreement between me and that superintendent. And that has happened along the South Shore already of schools that haven't because we all are really concerned about kids' social emotional health. But I can't classify them as school choice. So that definition saying, hey, if we go no school choice, that means it's no. So they wouldn't be allowed to stay. However, we go no school choice and this committee agrees to allow resident students who move out for giving me the opportunity to go solicit that superintendent, like Peter Schaefer, to say, hey, look, I've got a junior here that wants to stay, can we make out a deal? We could do that. That's an option, you know, um, that's, that's allowable through, through the department.
Hang on, Chris.
Thank you for that clarification.
I want to hear from Chris because he's been. Oh, thanks. I, I just had the num, I just had a few brief numbers that you'd asked for.
Oh, you did?
Yeah. Um, just for this, just for this year, you had asked for a comparison between the resident students' participation rate in advanced placement courses and participation in athletics. And for the 2021, 2022 school year, we had 290 students take at least one AP course out of a total population of 1083 for a percentage of 26, which is the, which matches the school choice. So the same percentage of school choice kids, choice and intake AP courses or at least one as the students that are here and residents. The athletic information for the same year, what we have for students taking at least, playing at least one sport that are resident students of either Whitman or Hanson are[1639.94] or Hansen, are 528 out of 1,083, which gives us a percentage rate of 48, which is double that, it doubles the participation rate of students coming in for choice.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, yeah. Thank you. I think Chris was-
Oh, sorry, Chris is waiting, yes.
David, still there?
He's just running to the restroom, it's getting, you know, working.
Sorry. Well, I just, maybe Dawn will first, because I would like to-
Oh.
On to David, if possible.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, sure, we can.
Yeah, that's fine. I'm just looking at the numbers again. So on the page that you did provide the players per sport for this year, 21-22, added them up, it's 14. So it's four, or 12?
14.
Yeah, 14. So it's 14 students choicing in, playing a sport, out of 50.
It says 12.
14 out of 50. I just have a real hard time closing this off, and I have-
Hang on, hang on, no.
And I have, I have a hard time losing that revenue. $300,000 it is, it's another, it's like a budget cut. You know, I support school choice, I do.
I guess I'll go, if that's okay?
Yeah, please.
So I just wanted to say to David, maybe we'll be able to see this, or talk to him later, but I completely respect his perspective, and I appreciate it, and it's a valid concern, and it's great to hear Jeff present something that could alleviate his concerns. But I just really want to talk about the negative impact it's had on our culture. And, you know, we talk a lot about doing what's best for students. I'll never make a finance, like a vote for, you know, financial consideration, when I feel as though whatever I'm doing or we're doing is negatively affecting students. And that's where I'm coming from. And I also think it negatively affects the communities, you know, as a whole.
Yes.
Particularly because of, there is, how do you build community? You build it through interaction, right? So, and like it or not, sports is a big part of our society, a big part, and it's one of the-
I agree.
The, one of the biggest ways that we connect as a community, particularly when our kids are little. So it's crucially important to remember that, and all those relationships, and what that means to participate with your friend, and to grow up, you know, imagining the day when you might be on varsity field competing, where those lifelong experiences take place, and those memories that you cherish forever are built in, within your own community. I won't ever put that aside for financial reasons, ever. So that's my perspective, that's why I'm adamantly against school choice, and its overall negative impact on both Whitman and Hansen, and Whitman Hansen as a whole.
Got it. So is there anyone that hasn't commented thus far that wants to comment? Or otherwise, we're going to move. Well, we're actually going to, well, I need someone to make a comment, because I'm going to wait for David, because he said he wanted, I'm sure he wants to be here for the vote, but, comment?
Steve, you hold on. I just want to say, I mean, I can hear Chris, David, Dawn, you know, all of these things are important. You kind of wish there was a hybrid of some sort.
Don't say-
Where you know you-
But it sounds like there might be.
Well, yes or no?
And can I clarify that?
Well, I mean, not exactly.
Correct.
You know, it's-
Let Steve, let Steve-
I'm sorry.
It's one lane, no, it's okay. It's one lane or the other. It's almost like, you do, and there's some benefit, or you don't, and there's maybe some benefit. But, you know, what gets to us is, in a sense, all the negative parts are maybe from both sides. So it's, it makes it extremely difficult. I mean, I did enjoy it for the revenue choices. I don't know, I'm just still, I'm still up in the air. I can't really say, but go ahead.
So Beth, go to Beth, and then-
Okay. So first, I have a question for Chris.
Sure.
How many complaints have you had from the public in regards to school choice? You know, have you had any parents, you know, call and complain about, you know, kids from other towns taking their place on the sports or anything?
No, I haven't received any complaints.
Do you know if the athletic director, if Bob has?
Not to my knowledge. Typically, a complaint like that, I would think, would come up to me, but I can't speak for sure-
Yeah.
If it was handled at his level.
Yeah. Well, my opinion is, I'm just looking, and I understand where everybody's coming from, and if your kid didn't make it, and you'd be upset about it. But I'm also looking, it says 12, you said 14, but it says here on the paper 12, which is 24%. So there's, 75% of the kids came here for another reason, and not to pay sports, which is important to me. There's got to be some other reason that they came here. And it can't just be because they're just finishing up school, you know. I'm concerned about, you know, and I know you said, you said, Jeff, that now Dessie changed the terms and stuff, but I know for years before, we have let kids stay here whose parents have moved out of town. I know we have done that, whether it was legal or not, it's been done. I know, because I know personally some people. I'm not looking at the money, I'm just looking at the opportunities. And they have a beautiful building here. Opportunities we're trying to make and improve every day, that's what we're doing here. I mean, we're looking to expand the, you know, the arts and stuff, we're looking to do that. I mean, ELL students coming in, you know, we're having the expansion of that. I, I just, you know, I didn't used to think about school choice, I didn't used to care about it one way or another. I mean, my kids played sports, and I've always been of the opportunity that, you know, eventually, you're going to be in a situation, if you go to college, and only the best are going to play, only the best are going to make varsity, and you're going to be with a whole bunch of different kids. And yeah, it's sad when your kid doesn't make it and everything else, but, you know, I'm sorry. To me, that's life, and that's how it goes. But I see 75% of these kids did not play a sport. They came to this building for another reason, and that, to me, is making my decision a difference. So, that's my comment.
So, I'm going to, Michelle, and then, well, actually, I'll go, and then Michelle can go, that way, you can, you can have the last word.
Chris, did you recognize me?
No, not yet, because we've heard, I think, we know how you voted, and we know the recommendation, and I think we have people's positions. So I just want to give anyone that hasn't shared perspective an opportunity to share theirs, which I know you, you have not-
No.
And I have not.
So you go.
But I'll give you the last word. And then I think we've got to move to vote. So for me, I think school choice is definitely a, this is, we've, we've had long meetings on school choice before, I remember, when it first came up. I have gotten complaints from parents, they are not related to athletics necessarily. And for me, the, I think we have a lot of work to do as a Whitman Hansen community to support the kids the way we need to do it. So I look at it as simplistically as, I want to get our own house in order for the communities we serve, before we start adding more to it, in this hope of trying to do more. So that's, that's my perspective. I was very concerned with the point you brought up.
Some of these kids out of the house are actually Whitman Hansen.
But hang on, hang on, yeah, so, I mean, I, right, so I was very concerned when, you know, the point you brought up, because I wouldn't be able to vote it for, you know, I wouldn't be able to make a decision to not support school choice if I knew there was someone from Whitman and Hansen that was relying on services, and then left, and there wasn't a workaround. So I feel better about that. But to me, our obligation, our charge is for Whitman and Hansen, the communities of. And I think I struggled when we started broadening that to others. But that's my two cents. You can give your two cents, and then let's vote it.
I, to piggyback over what you said, you made some great points, very well spoken, and thankfully, Jeff clarified, we certainly wouldn't want to turn our back on a Whitman Hansen student, ever, ever. I think we're all here to support our Whitman Hansen students, you said eloquently. School choice is not about turning our back on the Whitman Hansen students, it's about making sure we only support our Whitman Hansen students. Why would we want to welcome other students when we have to take care of our own? Like you said, our, making sure our own students are taken care of. So ultimately, student, school choice for me is not something I want to support, because I want to make sure that we take care of our own in-house, like Chris said. I want to make sure our students in here, for whatever reason, not just about sports, not making a team, it isn't about who made varsity, who, it's about, let's make sure our own students are taken care of in this building, before we bring in students from Brockton and everywhere else, regardless of why they came. Let's make sure our own students are okay. It isn't about, I mean, yes, we have reasons why they came, but we have our own students and community to be worried about. And yes, sports, theater, whatnot, we have to worry about our own students.
I'd rather, so at this point, what I'd rather do, because I know you want to make a point, and everyone's going to want to make a point, and I think everyone has had an opportunity to share their opinion, and I have a feeling, just listening, I think, Steve's still churning over there, but I think everyone else has probably made up their mind on what they want to do here. And I'm not sure it's going to be changed, regardless of what anyone says. So I would like to, I would like us to move to vote.
This is the policy, though, and this is kind of, so this was one of the other things. In our policy, it says, resident students be given priority placement in any classes or programs within the district over school choice students. So that was a huge concern that we had also, because we can't, we can't, we are not fulfilling that, and we can't possibly do it and not run into legal problems.
Should that not be addressed, then, right, if that's a policy?
Well, but-
So it's, it's a policy that-
It's an MASC policy.
Yeah, it's an MASC policy, but from Dessie, it's important to note that, once a non-resident student is admitted through choice, that school district must treat the student admitted through choice in the same manner it treats students residing in the district.
Okay, so the policy's moved.
So, so we're dealing with policy, but, you know, yeah, so whatever we decide to do, Policy Subcommittee has to address that as well, based on Dessie regs.
Can I point a clarification on your ability to work with surrounding towns and district superintendent? How would that message get out to families? That's my only concern, right? Because there may be parents who don't watch this meeting, and they just hear, oh, Whitman Hansen doesn't do school choice, and they make family plans to do otherwise.
Yeah, so, so basically, and Chris and I have been in the same boat, anytime, they, as soon as a parent is ready to leave the district, if they really want their student to stay, the first question is, can they stay? Parents don't even know about school choice in district, they really don't. So that, and we're like, yeah, sure, here's the school choice application. That next step would be, can my kid stay? Yes, the school committee has allowed me to contact, you need to tell me you're sending district, so I can make that phone call to that superintendent.
It happens all the time.
It, it, you know, that, that's it, and it does happen. And as to Beth's point, prior to choice being here, we had kids here that were just here with a wink and a nod, too, because we didn't turn our back on kids, so. But that, it has to go from, from, from you folks to give me the, the ability to contact that surrounding school, and decide whether or not, you know, they can stay. And if there's a financial setback.
So, we have a public hearing on school choice. How do you want to do it? Are we looking for a motion to?
So it's, it's assumed that you're open. So you need a motion to close, or withdraw. Thank you, Michelle. Because it's assumed that you're open.
Does anyone want to make that?
I'd like to make, make a motion to withdraw for school choice.
For the FY 22-23 school year.
Correct.
And can we maybe add, and we're authorizing Jeff to work with those students that are leaving?
Please.
Yes, something like that.
As said, Michelle, you got that?
Yeah. So Chris's motion is something to the extent of, well, you can say it, Chris.
Yeah, so I'm motioning to-
Is it two motions, separate?
It might be.
Yeah, because I could support one of the other-
I think just withdraw from school choice, need to clean up.
Well, why do you need-
Yeah, you wouldn't need the second without the first.
Why would you need it if we vote to support school choice?
Right, you wouldn't.
No, I mean, if it, school choice, we withdrew, withdrawn from school choice, then the second motion would be to give the superintendent the authority, I think, is that what we're saying?
Yeah, yeah. If we accept school choice, you don't need to give them the authority.
You've got to do one after the other. You're assuming that-
Yeah, you're counting your votes.
Yeah, you're counting your votes.
No, I'm, no, I'm, no, I'm not counting my votes, I'm just saying, I don't see how, so I'm, so I'm not-
I see what you're saying.
I'm not voting for that motion, then, because I need to know that-
Yeah.
The only way I'm voting for that would be if, I know that the student that he described is okay. No, I'm not counting my votes.
Michelle's point.
I'm trying to make sure I deal with that issue, because I'm, I'm not in favor of shutting it down if I know we can't support it.
Right.
But you do, you make whatever motion you want.
I'd like to make the, what I wanted to do was include the two, so I'll make the motion to disengage or withdraw from school choice. And I would also like to include authorization for our superintendent to work with surrounding districts for those kids that, for whatever reason, are faced with something that they think they may no longer be able to attend Whitman Hansen, superintendent can step in, work with surrounding districts, and facilitate that.
Get all that?
For a motion.
I would just work with superintendent.
Sure, yeah, yeah. Thank you.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, just any discussion. Everyone's clear on the motion? Yeah, discussion's open, go ahead.
All right. So I ran to the bathroom real quick, so if I miss any data on this, feel free to chime in. But, you know, two things I keep hearing, again, is one, the comfort knowing that the superintendent can reach out to other superintendents to provide students with the opportunity, if they leave the district, to work with the families, so that they're able to stay within the district at Whitman Hansen. However, something I think of at the top of my head, again, from personal experience, is when I see a lot of these students who are here from school choice, and again, I don't know the current dynamic necessarily right now, but a lot of these parents aren't necessarily involved, I'd say. I think there is certainly a disparity in some regards, that a lot of these students who are struggling socioeconomically, don't necessarily have the best home situation. So it's not necessarily common for them to advocate for that child's behalf. And a lot of the time, these students are advocating on their own, and they're on their own, and they need to provide themselves with the tools to succeed. And a lot of the time, they get the stability from being in the place they grew up with, or the community that they know. So I think it's great to provide Jeff the authorization to do that, but it wouldn't necessarily be effective if the students who are, would be impacted the most from it, don't necessarily get to reap the benefits, because they don't have an advocate there to say, hey, you know, I want so-and-so to stay within the school district, how can we make it happen? So I think that's a concern, too. But the second part that I keep hearing is that we need to worry about in-house. And I totally, you know, respect and agree where everyone's coming from, when they say that terminology, but I want to really put emphasis that a lot of these students who are school choice were former Whitman Hansen students, from what I've seen. So I think when you say someone's moved out of district, and they're not necessarily, you know, a part of the house-
That's not what we mean.
No.
No, okay, well, hold on, that's not, I'm not saying the Policy Subcommittee, I'm just saying that when we talk about working within house, and students-
So why don't you just make your, make your position, and let's not worry about what other, trying to infer what other people are saying. So what, what is your position, or what do you want to share?
I just want to say that, I think a lot of, I think a lot of students would benefit from having school choice. So I think, yeah.
And I think you made that point. I think everyone has made their point. So at this point, I'd really like to move to a vote, unless you have something we have not discussed at the-
One of the comments was a misrepresentation, so I was going to address that.
Ah, let's just leave it as, let's just leave it as we'll agree to disagree on some of this, right?
Everybody knows what they're going to do.
Fair enough.
Misrepresenting.
So we're going to move to the vote.
No, I wasn't talking about you.
So the vote, the vote would be to withdraw from school choice, with the understanding that you have the authority to work on placements of people that leave. That is the vote. Everyone's clear on what we're voting?
Students to enroll in Hansen.
Can you say that again?
Yeah.
So, the vote, the motion is to withdraw from school choice for 2022-23, and authorize the superintendent to work with surrounding districts, and allow non-resident students to enroll in Whitman Hansen.
Yeah, yeah, it sounds great. You said it in half the words, Chris took.
That's why she does what she-
All right. Are we good, moving to the vote?
Yes.
All those in favor?
One, two, three, four, what is that, five?
Five. And all those opposed?
That's three, so.
Five, three, oh, yeah, because we have a four. So it carries, okay. All right. So then we'll be withdrawing from school choice for this year, and then we have to do this again next year, right?
We do it every year.
Every year.
We have, yes.
Every year, it's a, it's an annual, it's an annual vote.
Okay. And we'll close the public hearing on school choice. All right. Thank you, everyone. Look, I know everyone has different opinions on this, I think hopefully we all respect those different opinions.
Clarification, so the vote that's taken, it doesn't have to be a majority of the total committee, just the majority of the board?
Correct.
Okay, just make sure.
Yeah, that's my understanding as well. The budget one is different, I think, because of the two-thirds, it has to be seven. At least that's what we've been told, we can double it.
There's nothing in regs to say a majority of the, two-thirds, it's a majority vote of the board.
Yeah, okay. Where are we going now? We can skip over, void update, yes.
Yep, we're going to pass, pass over the phone system.
We don't have any gifts, we don't have any field trips, so we have Subcommittee, anything we need to share with Whitman's school building?
We can update at the next meeting of the Whitman Building Committee, unless you want to speak about-
Well, George and I this morning did a dry run with MSBA on the building, what to expect when we meet next week. We had four applicants, all four, which we didn't realize, go to them. And then on next week, when we meet, then we choose, we rank, three, two, one points, or whatever. And we, or we just eliminate one, if one is not really good, we can keep three, or maybe just two. He said that sometimes they don't even have interviews, if like, there's a real majority on one. He said, but generally, they don't like to do that. So the 19th is our next, so. That's a quick update.
Budget Subcommittee, busting, we talked about that. And then I think we all talked about getting back to the five-year plan. And, yeah, so we talked about the five-year plan, OPEB, and then I'm skipping over it, but the Dessie Subcommittee, the Dessie Budget Subcommittee meeting that we had, where we talked about Hold Harmless, and probably doing an entire, maybe summer discussion on Hold Harmless. I think that's what I had from it. Yeah, did I miss anything?
Yeah, no, 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 I just, so, yeah, so we last met, was it Wednesday? Last Wednesday?
Yep.
Yeah, all right. So we met last week on Wednesday. So like Chris was saying, over the summer, we plan on hopefully working towards putting together a whole harmless presentation, use to educate the public. We're also working to get an OPEB presentation out there. Some current conversations we're having with Mr. Stanbrook is the idea of a reserve fund. We're still early in the conversations regarding that, but that's something we're looking into. And obviously, as Chris just said, we're looking into the five-year plan, we're still continuing to work on that. Our next meeting is April 27th at 6:30, pretty short. So that's what we've got going on, we're busy, we're meeting pretty much on a weekly basis, other than next week, nice little break, but we're at it, and we're getting there. So that's what's going on.
Thank you, Dave.
Yeah.
Negotiation Subcommittee, so this is on here, because we need to appoint someone for B, C, and D.
So B is administrators, C are administrative assistants, and D are paraprofessionals. We're very close-
Wait, say that again, B is what?
B is administrator, so your APs, your directors. C are your administrative assistants, and D are our paraprofessionals. Cindy and I are meeting tomorrow to firm up more things in A.
Yep.
So we're pretty close with A, and we, because of the, of the association, they they would like to get some folks on board so we can get some time to look at B, C, and D.
Yeah, so B, so we need someone for B, someone for C, someone for D, Jeff and George will be participating in, they'll splitting those up.
We're splitting those up.
The thing that Jeff and I talked about is we anticipate that these probably won't, it would be nice, but I'm not sure they'll be done before elections. So our thinking was, again, we'll, the committee, whatever you wanna do, was it might make sense to get someone to do B, someone to do C, someone to do D, it doesn't have to be three people, but perhaps people that aren't up for election, so we don't run into a situation where someone's negotiated something and then they're not reelected and then they have to pick back up again. So that was our thinking.
So I'm off the hook.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Me, too.
Well, I am anyways.
But so, but we can do whatever you want, but that was, that was the rationale for our thinking, is avoiding a situation where someone gets 80% of the way and then they're not there anymore, so. So any volunteers to do B, C, and D? Or a volunteer for B? Adam, Chris, great. C?
B.
Chris said.
Whichever. How, how may I serve?
Oh, great. Anyone for C or D?
I want to, I need to call to see if it's something I can do. I just wanna make sure that I'm doing it right and not gonna get into.
So you'll do one as long as you're.
If I can call, if someone can, if, if I can call the ethics commission and they say you're fine, but I don't want, I don't want anyone to say or to allege things that.
We understand.
Call ethics, but I think you're clear to do.
Anyone else willing?
I believe you are.
I can't.
I don't, I, anyone else?
I could probably do D. I worked with a lot of paras at.
That'd be great. I'd be working right with George.
Thank you, thank you. So anyone else?
I get to work.
Anyone else as an alternate if Hillary can?
Hillary, Hillary can do.
Any, any taken?
Maybe.
You need an old. Oh, thank you. So we have three and then David said he did.
Perfect.
Awesome, thank you. So B will be Scriven.
You and I.
C will be.
C or D?
C is up in the air right now with Hillary.
Hillary, if she's ethically allowed, otherwise David, and then D would be Steven.
Yes, yes.
Fantastic. Thank you all for doing that.
We forgot this.
Yeah, we'll bring that back, I'm just scanning anything else. So academic, did we miss academic calendar?
Yeah, I missed it, too. I'm looking at the whole one.
Sorry, thank you. Uh, do we just need to vote updates?
Yeah, voter, I'm looking at voting the update, we had to change grading day to the end of the year, we moved it till the 17th because we had moved it with the extension of our five school days. So grading day will now be on the 17th, it was a week prior.
So can we get a motion to accept?
Motion to accept.
Second.
Any discussion?
Well, so the half-day was on the 10th.
Yeah.
Now that's gonna be a full day and the half-day's on the 17th.
Because we extended the school year.
And there'll be a district-wide message that will go out.
As soon as you guys voted, it's gonna go out tomorrow. So that's why I wanted to do it today.
Okay.
Uh, all those in favor? Yeah, that was wonderful, thank you. Policy Subcommittee, anything else to add other than, I think, appreciate your work from earlier?
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we have one policy, do you mind if I take it?
I have a couple of things, but go ahead.
Okay, do you, do you mind? So in your packet, Nadine was here before, we are out of compliance with policy EFDA, and I presented this to the policy Subcommittee. Really, the major, it was a couple of tweaks, but the major tweak was removing the lines under E record-keeping, removing letter C, graduating seniors and students that transfer out of district must pay all charges in full, fear you do so may result in not being allowed to participate in graduation. That's against the law and we shouldn't have this in policy, so I wanted to get it amended so that it's clean. So the, the policy Subcommittee unanimously supported all the changes in this document and I just need school committee approval.
So we don't have it on the agenda, Jeff, or do we?
It's, I thought it was.
I thought it was, I don't, under policy Subcommittee, it's a.
That's a Subcommittee report, that's not a vote.
Oh.
Okay, okay.
We can do it next time, but I don't think we should, I mean, if we're not gonna let, if we're not gonna vote capital, then I don't think we should vote.
Okay, okay.
Clean, that's fine. Um, yes, but I.
Good, I got you.
Yes, go ahead.
Um, yeah, so the past several meetings we've had on our agenda, looking at the policy of administrators coaching and AD coaching, along with where we stand on school choice. We've had both personal experiences and we've had constituents come to us with concerns about culture, and that's why we decided to put the, well, why as chair, I put those on the agenda, not to target the individuals, but to understand that structure dictates behavior. And when we see behavior that we don't feel comfortable with, it's natural to look at the structure. So it, and we, we felt as though school choice was kinda integrally involved in our concerns. So that's kind of the history of, of how it got to this point. Thankfully, Jeff has, has offered to work with the policy Subcommittee through workshops and maybe over the summer or sometime soon, and you know, maybe bring in some of the stakeholders in this, and, and make sure that we are ensuring positive, healthy culture for our students, because that's what that's about, right? And that's what I'm about. So it's not that my kid didn't make a team, it's that I'm looking out for our communities in the best interest of all. That's what we've been discussing for our policy Subcommittee, so thank you.
Thanks.
Facilities, not saying legislative, anything.
So just a quick thing, I did, as the liaison to our reps, I reached out to Allison Sullivan, had a great meeting with Allison and Lincoln, and she put do playgrounds in Whitman on the governor's budget. So I don't know if we've received any funds yet, but those will offset some of our capital expenses if the governor funds some of that specifically around Conley and Duval and the playground numbers that we sent out. So great meeting with her, great meeting with Lincoln. I met the new representative from District One in Hanson today, and legislative while I sit here, I was part of a check, we, the town of Hanson received two checks today, one for $50,000 plus and one for $249,000 plus in CARES money that we filed, thanks[1547.12]